All right. Well, welcome everyone to the April 19th Income Tax Filing Day Edition of the Medfield Board of Selectmen. This meeting will be held in a hybrid format. The Board of Selectmen will attend in person and members of the public may attend in person. In addition, members of the public who wish to participate via Zoom may do so by joining by one of the options that's listed in the meeting agenda that you can access at the town website. This point, just to disclose, this meeting is being recorded by Medfield TV. It will be available after the fact for anyone who can't make this meeting. And to start, we'd like to take a moment to appreciate the troops serving around the globe in defense of our country. Thank you. The first appointment we have, I believe, is Chief Garrett. I thought I saw her SUV here.
The chief is not here.
The chief is not here.
Nope, I'm here in her.
You're here.
Car and she is requesting that Officer Daniel Neal be appointed as a full-time police officer. He has graduated the academy and started his training with the department.
Any questions or comments?
I would be lying if I said I knew the gentleman that well. Is he new to the forces? He, I'm.
Yes, he's just finished the academy.
Okay. So, welcome aboard. That's good. Congratulations.
Pete, does he by any chance live in town or not?
I don't know if he currently lives in town, but in order to be eligible for civil service, he was on our list. I don't remember if he was one of our transfer applicants or not, though. I'd have to double check.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. And can I have a motion?
I move to appoint Officer Daniel Neal to the, as a full-time police officer for the town.
A second.
All those in favor? Yes. Wait, wait.
Isn't that usually made subject to certain requirements being met?
He's already met all those requirements.
I thought that was, I thought that's what we did before he went to the police academy.
Yeah, this is the second.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So, all those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's see, next item, you're up, Mo.
Fine gentleman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, there's two contracts they're looking for approval for tonight. Both have to do with our INI system and our sewer collection system. Basically, INI stands for infiltration and inflow. And what that, what that means is infiltration is kind of groundwater coming into our system, which we don't want it to, but it's a very common problem in a lot of cities and towns. Basically, there's cracks in the pipes, manhole covers that may be off or have cracks at their seams. Excessive water gets to the treatment plant, which we pay for to treat. And the more we can kind of lessen at the treatment plant, the better off we are and more times we'll be in compliance with Mass DEP because when you have excessive groundwater, with the excessive water coming in, we don't want it backing out into the system. So, you have to, sometimes the treatment isn't the way we want it to be. So, these two contracts kind of address these kind of issues. The inflow part of it is from, if it's a catch basin that's connected to the sewer system that's not supposed to be, or sump pumps, or roof drains, things like that, we try to minimize those as well. So, the one, first contract was for capacity analysis. Basically, anything coming into the treatment plant, we want to make sure that we have the correct processes to handle all that water coming in until we can minimize it. It's hard to eliminate INI. You ask anybody in the industry, you try to minimize as much as you can, but you're still treating at times, whether it's precipitation events or snow, snowfall, melting, that's when a lot of the water infiltrates into the system. So, the capacity analysis is to see what our processes are down at the treatment plant, see how we can mitigate some of the things, make things, make some improvements to get that to where it's supposed to be so it's treated properly to go out into the effluent, as affluent to the Charles River. The other contract is for, so in the systems, whether you have infiltration, you have different areas of town that have found to be porous, that we need to either replace the pipes or cement line them so that no water is able to infiltrate into the system. We found a couple of locations. One, in the Vine Lake Cemetery area, they're going to look to put more flow meters there to confirm. We're looking at almost 250,000 gallons coming into the system in that area. So, we want to make sure we can confirm that and eventually go for design for that to fix that area. This one here happens to be for Harding Street area. Right up your alley there. Could be at your house, could be right near there. But there's a lot of pipes in that area that have, found to have cracks that the water's coming in. We did CCTV, we did the flow meters. So, this is to kind of confirm everything at the Vine Lake Cemetery and design the Harding Street system to replace, to minimize some of that water coming into the system.
So, should I expect my basement to start flooding more frequently?
It depends. Do you have a, do you have a sump pump that's connected to the sewer?
I have two sump pumps. I don't think they're connected.
But both of these are trying to minimize some of the, those water issues.
Question?
The only question I have, just out of curiosity, Mo, is how frequently do we do analysis and things like this to the system?
For the, for the, for the INI?
Yeah.
Every year, we spend some money to look at different parts of the system, to cement line certain areas of pipes, but lately, we've had such an influx of water that we've kind of held off on that and trying to see where the main parts are. Because you have, you could have small leaks in different parts of the town that are, say, 5,000 gallons total, which doesn't amount to much. You want to get the, you know, the smoking guns, so to speak. So, you know, if we can eliminate 30, 40, 50% of what we have out there, it's that much closer we are to, to be able to handle all the water that comes in at times. It doesn't happen all the time, but depending on certain rain events, if you have a week where it just, just rains and rains and rains, the groundwater levels come up, gets into the system someplace, somewhere. So, we're trying to isolate those areas and fix those areas.
When we had the 100-year rain back, what, in 2011, 2012, maybe around there, did that crush our system at all?
It, it does. It's, it's periodic. I mean, it, you know, at first, we thought there could be a manhole cover in the Charles River that was, was off, that the water, when the groundwater raised up, it was just flowing in there. We went through the interceptor, we went through all different areas, but it's very difficult to pinpoint. It's just a combination of a lot of different things. So, we try to take the most infiltration areas first and then decide whether it's worth, because if you look at, if something costs you like $10 million to do 100,000 gallons worth of water coming into the system, is that worth it? Where we could do maybe 400,000 gallons for a million dollars, that would be worth it. So, you have to kind of weigh the pros and cons. There's little leaks everywhere in the system, you know, to try to spend all that money to get little, little benefit from. So, we're trying to get those smoking guns first and then see where we're at.
Thank you.
Sure.
Bill has something. I don't know if you want to go to him. I'm happy to go to him first so you can hear his questions if you want. You need a microphone. You have a microphone. That's a first. Is that your own or?
My reputation is preceding me. I'm in trouble. So, I'm not asking this question because I've already had two leaking water lines at my house. I'm just wondering, you say Harding Street, how about the developments along Harding Street or just the main line on Harding Street?
It's the sewer lines that have the cracks and not the water lines. So, it's the drainage, the groundwater coming into the system. So, when it goes through the treatment plant.
Infiltration.
Yeah.
So, is it just Harding Street, though, or you think it'll be going down?
It's the Harding Street area. So, there's different areas around Harding Street that they're looking to design to either replace or cement line to rid ourselves of those cracks.
Is it just a study at the moment or is?
The study has confirmed those, that area has significant leakage in those sewer pipes.
So, there may be some work in some of the neighborhoods off of Harding Street?
Correct.
There'll be notice, I assume?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I have another question on the next one, but that's, thank you.
The longstanding residents of Harding Street tend to be a little harder on the town sewer pipes than in the mortified neighborhoods.
But there's only two of us, so believe me, we flush as infrequently as possible. Too much info.
Okay, Pete.
So, can you maybe give us the update on the INI percentages? Because I know that we've been making a lot of progress on that, I think.
As far as percentages for?
How much infiltration we're getting? Because it seemed to me at one point, we were up at like 25% and now we're down at, last I heard, we were at 10 or something.
So, at times, right now, like during the wintertime, we're probably anywhere between 400 and 600,000 gallons at the treatment plant. Sometimes when we have the infiltration, it could be anywhere from 800,000 to 1.2 million gallons going through. Sometimes even more depending on, on the.
Is that a daily amount, Mo?
I think you're talking about two different things.
Oh.
I think that Slavon Peterson is talking about the unaccounted-for water.
Oh, unaccounted-for water, okay. So, unaccounted-for water.
That was the infiltration.
No, 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 that's, that's for the water department. The infiltrate, the INI is for the sewer collection system.
Okay.
Okay, so the unaccounted-for water is leaks that we have in the water system that's pressurized, that no water should be leaking from that system, but you do have leaks at times. Our unaccounted-for water went from about six years ago, about, we were about close to 26 to 31%. Now, we're down to, we just did the ASR, which is the annual statistical report. It brought us down to, right now, we're sitting at 15 to 17%.
Okay.
That's water we pump in.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It's lost.
So, we're getting closer and closer. Every year, we're dropping more and more. We're finding leaks or changing out meters that have stopped or that haven't been working properly and we're gaining on it pretty quickly, so.
So, in terms of the INI?
Yeah.
I saw the Vine Lake Cemetery and that just seemed like an odd place to be, having a lot of problems with the sewer.
Well, it, these sewer lines go into the interceptor that goes to the treatment plant. So, it has to go across land to get there. So, it just happens to be in those, those pipes in that area that's getting water infiltration. So, it's not so much because of the cemetery or anything like that. It's not the use of the land. It's basically just the age of the pipes or, you know, things that happen, roots get into the system. So, we, we do use water flow meters to, the kind of all-around town to make sure that if there's high amounts of infiltration coming in, we can kind of backtrack and kind of pinpoint the areas where that's coming from. But it's, it's difficult because you get it, you get it all over town, so.
So, do you actually have a sewer line that runs through the cemetery somewhere?
We do.
Okay.
We do.
All right. Then the other thing I wanted to ask you about was Harding Street, because I drive up and down Harding Street endlessly.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of times a day, sometimes. And, and when I saw the, the reference to wetlands, all of a sudden, it dawned on me that, I mean, a lot of Harding Street is very low. There's that whole area where there used to be the pond for making ice. There's that existing pond. Do you have a sewer running? You must have a sewer running there because there are manhole covers.
Yeah, wherever you see the manhole covers, that's where the sewer line goes and it, like I said, eventually ends up at the interceptors with the large collection pipes that go right into the treatment plant.
So, that, that area is very low, so I'm assuming that there's a lot of high groundwater.
Right. So, when the groundwater comes up, if the groundwater comes up, our pipes are down, you know, five, six feet down under the ground for cover so things don't freeze and, but as the groundwater comes up, if you have leaks in your pipe, it, it comes into your pipes. Nothing's coming out. It's mostly coming in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And it's, so when you lay a new sewer, are the pipes basically watertight or?
Absolutely. It's supposed to be a tight system.
Okay, all right. So, the other question I had about that area of Harding Street is that, I just have this personal preference. I try to avoid running over the manholes, but there, there's so many manholes along that section of Harding for some reason. Do you have any idea why there's so many? I mean, there are a lot of times, there're two of them side by side.
It all depends, it all depends if there's connecting pipes that go into different directions. You need a manhole to connect them to, to move to another, another direction.
That can't be the reason along that stretch. But take a look at it sometime. There are a ton of them. And they're always double ones.
It could be, could it be a sewer and a drain?
Keeps me on my toes.
Could be a drain manhole as well?
To avoid driving over them.
Right.
But, that was all that I had.
Funny, when I see lots of manholes, it's like playing Asteroids.
Well, yeah, I do that, too. That's what I'm saying. That's why I noticed.
You try to straddle them, yeah, yeah.
When they design, when they design sewer systems and design drainage systems, the manholes and the pipes is supposed to be either in the middle of the travel lane or outside the traveling, so you don't hit it with your tire, but it always seems to be right in your, right in your wheel.
Well, plus, they're double ones on Harding all along.
Is it sewer and drainage or just sewer? Because it could be drain manholes. That's, it could be a drainage system right next to these.
I just know that they're manholes. I don't stop and look. I just try to avoid them. But they're on the, on the side heading to town from, from up at the hospital.
I blew two tires once north of Boston, up near the power plant that's up over where the casino is. It was before the casino was there. And what it was is that they had taken out the, they'd taken out a square patch of asphalt but left the manhole. So, there was like a six-inch, and I hit both left wheels. And I called the city to see about getting, you know, getting some sort of compensation for that booby trap. And I said, well, I hit a manhole cover. And the question I got was which manhole cover? It's like, what do you mean which manhole? He goes, oh, there's a lot of manhole covers. So, I drove all the way up there and there are like 25 manhole covers in front of that because it's, there's the Boston Water and Sewer, there's the Electric Company, there's, there's like, they really had just this, and then I had to remember which one it was. I'm sitting there, I said, that one. It was an interesting experience. We're not that bad.
Did they pay for your tires?
Huh?
Did they pay for your tires or not?
No.
It's called the pothole statute.
I can see my mark. Mark's like, yeah, it's not gonna happen.
Not gonna happen, yeah. So, on this first one, I think actually, as you were talking, you've answered my question on this one because it, at some place, on the agenda, it said it was a capacity analysis. And my first question was, are you, are we analyzing the capacity against our current demand or are we forecasting increased demand because of the state hospital development? But I think that's an irrelevant question.
We are going to be looking at the, the water system and the sewer system and the treatment plant separately.
That's a separate, okay.
Look at the function of the treatment plant to see what improvements are necessary as we move into the future.
And then do we want to go to second questions? Do you have more to say on the second contract or?
No, basically, it's the, you know, replacement of the Harding Street area that's just the design right now and then the confirmation of the Vine Lake Cemetery area to go into a design later on.
Okay. You had a question, first off.
No, I'm good.
Okay, you had a question.
Thank you.
You had a question on second contract, okay.
So, on the second one, I noticed that the contract has a deliverable like 120 days after signing, which puts it like in August. And I was just kind of curious that since due diligence is going on now with Trinity and everything else, whether, and supposedly, they're meeting with the departments, the police and DPW and, and, you know, water, Board of Water and Sewage and everything else is going forward here. And I'm just curious as if the projected usage wastewater flow or whatever from the new development will be covered in your conversations or the scope of work.
This is, this will be a separate talk with the INI. It's more about repair.
No, I'm sorry, I was on the second one. I was more on the wastewater, the sewage treatment, second, the second contract.
About the capacity analysis?
Yeah.
The capacity analysis right now is for the, for the overflow of infiltration. It's not about the capacity for the treatment plant for new development.
Interesting, okay.
But the second one is for the design of improvements to the system.
Well, it's on the adequacy. And it's all, we've always had questions about, you know, you know, when we do these things going forward, have we looked at, you know, do we have enough water? Do we have enough, you know?
So, with the INI study, so this is a capacity analysis for the infiltration at this point. When we do the study for the treatment plant itself, it's still for INI, but it takes into consideration of what to expect for capacity in the future as well, to look at the treatment plant as a whole to see what type of improvements are needed for the treatment plants. It's, it's built in the, what, 70s, I believe, that, you know, if you, you can put a Band-Aid on it for so long before you need to make improvements, just like everything else.
So, presumably, you'll have some idea as you get further in your discussions with Woodard and Curran or the next, you know, subcontract or whatever.
With Trinity, I mean, those discussions would be about, you know, about capacity, but more about the connections leading to the treatment plant. And then our study looks at the treatment plant as a whole to see what kind of improvements are needed at the treatment plant to handle not only the INI of what we can minimize, but INI moving forward as well as capacity for that plant.
Because I have seen the PAR study, whatever, that looked at the connections on Hospital Road and leading from Hospital Road forward, so.
Because we want to make sure that with this, you know, if the state hospital developed or any kind of development in the town, that, you know, if you put a 12-inch or an eight-inch line in the, in the road, yeah, it's going to take what, what comes out of the development, but it's to get to the treatment plant. How, how is everything connected to one area? Is that going to back up? Is it, is it large enough? Is it diversified enough to get to the treatment plant?
Pete, Pete, any questions on the second?
Yeah, that actually raised a couple, what you said raised a couple of questions in my mind. I thought that we had done an analysis that had shown that we had a capacity for the state hospital development at the wastewater treatment plant and water, that we had plenty of, enough water and enough sewer capacity.
So, I believe, I don't, so I think we're getting a little confused with the treatment plant. The treatment plant itself, like I said, is in the 1970s, we're looking to improve that treatment plant over time. So, it's not so much that there's not enough capacity, it's more of how do we, what do we do with the capacity? What do we, how do we handle it? What, what improvements since the 1970s should be made at the treatment plant to make it the most efficient plant that we can make it at this time?
So, that was the second question that your comments raised for me, which is what, I mean, you're alluding to the fact that it's pretty old and, and that it's going to need some upgrades apparently. And have anybody done an analysis of that?
That's what we're, that's what we're going to be doing in the near future.
Okay.
But right now, it's, the more pressing issue for us is the, the infiltration coming in. We're trying to minimize as much as we can to do an analysis of the capacity for the INI, going through the different processes at the treatment plant. We're trying to see what can be improved, kind of the low-hanging fruit right now.
I don't remember seeing anything about the wastewater treatment plant on the cap, on the, like the 25-year capital plan for the town buildings and facilities. Is it there?
No, it's going to be part of our new.
Yeah, okay.
We're looking at the, the whole, the water system and the sewer collection system.
Yeah, because we want to plug those numbers in. Thank you.
Sure.
So, Mo, last time you were here with the contract, you were so well-prepared with my questions. I felt like I.
I have nothing highlighted today.
So, my, my questions are, I think they're fairly easy. This, this is the second contract.
Sure.
And it's, they're actually questions that I pulled out from the Woodard and Curran proposal, so not the contract document. On the background, on the first page of the proposal, it said, following the SSES upon request by the town, Woodard and Curran submitted a project evaluation form to the Mass DEP for financing consideration of a future sewer system rehabilitation project, which resulted in the town being put on the draft intended use plan. However, it is understood that the town does not wish to pursue the use of SRF funds to finance bidding or warden construction of this project. Is that a timing?
So, yeah, so we, we have the project approved on SRF if we wanted to get, to take a loan out. Depending on what's found with these studies, then we look at to see if it's done by free cash, whether or not we borrow, if it's a better alternative, depending on the rates or we, but to borrow, we'd need more substantial projects to make it worthwhile for the borrowing.
Okay. The next, lump sum, when it talks about lump sum contract here, it's the same as fixed price, right?
Correct. So, they won't, they won't exceed those, those prices.
The individual, okay.
Yep.
And then the only other minor thing I had on the last page, it sounded reasonable. They said the cost of police details will be borne by the town. That kind of made sense to me.
Yeah.
But then there was one, this is just information, it says sewer lateral rehabilitation design is not included. And I read that and said, what is sewer lateral rehabilitation design?
So, basically, it's the pipes in the network.
So, that.
We're talking about the, the capacity analysis, correct?
Talking about the second contract here. This is the engineering design services or sewer rehabilitation projects.
Oh. Can you tell me where you saw that?
Yeah, it's, it's on there, so it's Attachment A and it's the, I'm not sure it's the third page because I only printed out the pages I needed. It's the last, it's the signature page.
Yep.
Starts clarifications and assumptions and the police details, the fourth bullet, and that sewer lateral rehabilitation design is not included is the fifth bullet.
The sewer lateral rehabilitation design is, I believe, they referencing the Vine Lake Cemetery. We're not designing the Vine Lake Cemetery, we're just doing the Harding Street area, but we're doing work to confirm numbers at the Vine Lake Cemetery at this point. So, that design will come at a later time.
Okay.
Will you put on my highlighter?
No, that one, I was just trying to, that was just education. I didn't have a clue what that thing was. Okay, I, those, yeah, those are my only questions, okay.
Thanks.
Motion.
You're set for a motion. Do you want two motions or one?
Two. You want to do them both? Okay, we'll do them both.
I move to approve the contracts with Woodard and Curran for a capacity analysis at the wastewater treatment plant and for engineering design services for sewer rehabilitation projects as outlined by the, by Mo, by the director.
Maybe I could add, for anybody who's listening in, the first contract is a $70,000 contract. The second one is 100,000, 100, 10,000.
I'm starting that motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Thanks, Mo.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Good night.
All right. Next, we have a public hearing for the following solicitor license applications, power home remodeling requests from Justin Palumbo, Samuel Krajewski, Matthew Heaney, Isaac Alcori, and Andrew Gingras. I think first I have to declare the public hearing is now open. And do we have any presentations or anything or?
Justin Palumbo is going to speak on behalf of the applicant.
Is there something that defines it, isn't it? Has it been just home, power home remodeling? They'll do that? Okay.
He's not there.
Not at the moment.
Okay.
Are these, this is a single company called Power Home Remodeling?
Yes, you had a, you already approved one for a different group to do power home remodeling several months ago.
But we don't have anybody here to speak to.
There's nobody here to speak to.
It's a person in the attendee group with just the initial J, which I assume is Justin Palumbo, but he's not responding to my request to join the meeting.
The one observation I'd make is that four of the five filled out asking for a one-year approval. And Justin asked for April 1st to June 29th of this year. So, we've got, that's, that's the one, so that is the timeframe, okay.
One year until end of year.
Yeah, they have different times.
Yeah, they do vary.
So, we don't, we don't have anybody to speak to this?
I just emailed them.
There's, like I said, there's an individual in the attendee panel with just the letter J, who I assume is them, but they're not joining the meeting.
Is it doing something else?
Okay, why don't we, why don't we just defer this?
We pulled on that, we wanted something, and so we can come back.
Okay, okay. Let's see, the, the next item, discussion item and potential votes is the annual town meeting warrant article, so, uh, I'm guessing, well, I don't know how long a conversation that's gonna be, it might be a somewhat long conversation. Do you wanna do anything before we get to that, or does it ma, doesn't matter?
Are the school people waiting on us, Gus, for the next item?
Well, that's why, that's actually why I'm asking, although I know Jess Riley was gonna tune in from home, and I assume she did. That could be Jess, could be the J too.
That could be the J.
She's not, she's not, that's why she's not responding to Justin. Well, if you want, we just keep, we just go down the warrant article, that's fine, there's not a lot of other guests coming in anyway, so, um, why don't we go ahead? How, how do you wanna proceed on this, Christine? Some of these are straightforward, a couple of them are not.
Correct, I think the ones that are straightforward, I think, um, we can list each warrant article, and then you can take a vote to support it. You could do several at once if you'd like.
Do you all have?
I can go online and do it.
You, you have it, okay. Pete, you've got, you've got your copy of it.
I have a copy, yeah, I've got two copies.
Two copies, you give, you got two copies, and you only want one, then give the other one to Eileen, unless you.
Oh, Eileen doesn't have one?
Yeah. Pete had an extra one.
Oh, fabulous, thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna suggest that we can probably dispense with the first, second, third, fourth, probably the fifth.
You can put all those at once.
Unless, unless either of you wanna hold out for more than nine hundred dollars a year on the, on the annual compensation. And, well, let's, those first five are all routine articles that we have every year. First one is acceptance of the annual report, second one is the acceptance of the money for perpetual care at Vine Lake. Third is author, reauthorizing annually the revolving fund amounts. Fourth is the PEG access and cable-related funds, which I believe is the article that's required to transfer the money that we get from the cable companies to Medfield TV. Fifth is the elected official compensation, which is restricted to a very limited number of people.
Although it does include the town clerk's.
Town clerk, town clerk salary, which I believe has a two percent increase, consistent with the increases that other town employees have gotten. And then, uh, it's the, I'm just doing this up top, I had Board of Assessors and Board of Selectmen.
Or a nine-hundred.
And that's the only other ones, I believe, right? Town moderator, isn't he?
I'm in favor of all of those.
Yeah. All those in favor, articles one through five, there, let me be clear, all those in favor of the Board of Selectmen recommending approval of these articles.
Yes.
One through five, yes. So, that's unanimous for the first five. Personnel administration plan, I think, might also be straightforward in the sense that it's sort of a function of contracts. So, are we also good, so?
Second on that.
In favor of recommending approval of Article Six?
Yes.
Yes. Article Seven.
Article Seven is the operating budget.
That's the operating budget, so the operating budget, I have not done my, Nick, I'm assuming you did not do my normal score sheet that I do this year, right? I didn't expect you to, I'm just.
No, we did, we did not.
So, I will probably still do that for purposes, from my own knowledge, uh, 'cause I still keep score that way. However, the, the, we are not looking for an override, the Warrant Committee has recommended approval. In going down through the list of things, the only place that is always the difference every year, I believe, is that the Warrant Committee always asks for more than the department, 'cause the Warrant Committee folds in the, the salary increases where the departments are not allowed to do that. So, that's why there's that number, we often get that question.
And then just, I think, one of the major highlights that the Warrant Committee has been working on, as well as the Board of Selectmen with the financial policy, is this is the first time in recent years that there has been no free cash used to balance the operating budget.
Pending any outrageous spending amendments that come in at the town meeting. Yeah, so free cash is on the list, but right now, the expectation is that we won't use any free cash to balance things. This is just curiosity, not an issue. I was curious why the Warrant Committee bumped the reserve fund up to a hundred seventy thousand from its long history of being a hundred fifty thousand, if there was a, just curious why, that's all.
There were a couple of items that we thought may be an expenditure that we had not anticipated throughout the year, and there were some cuts that were made that may actually come to fruition this year, so.
So, they're hedging a little bit on the reserve fund, okay. So, based on the war, speaking personally, based on the Warrant Committee's recommendation that we approve the operating budget, I'm good.
Second on that?
Doing the, well, I'm not moving, I'm just, this is a discussion, this is a discussion. Speaking personally, I, I'm, I'm prepared to, you know, to follow the Warrant Committee's lead on this one and also recommend approval, but that's a discussion point. Then, uh, we have vote three, three for recommending approval of the operating budget. So, we're good there. Next one down, transferring in additional funds into the municipal building stabilization fund. That one would be sort of our normal procedure for replenishing the building stabilization fund. Christine, I don't think there's anything extraordinary about this year doing it, that.
No, number eight, Article number eight, that's the reimbursement setup committee for the Dale Street project, as well as unexpendable appropriation funds from other projects.
I'd just add, for additional color commentary, the two-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand transfer that stands out a bit is being later re-appropriated for the school roofs article. That, that source of money comes from a previous appropriation to study the school roofs, and it's being re-appropriated this year to actually do some improvements to the school roofs, just so. That one stands out a bit.
Good, any other, any questions, comments?
No, I'm good.
So, we, we have another three to nothing vote for recommending approval of Article Eight. Article Nine is the appropriation funds to the municipal buildings capital stabilization fund. From, excuse me, this is the outgoing, this is the outgoing expenditure. About one, one point one-five-nine million dollars, two-thirds vote required. My only question on that one, that sounded okay to me, but it said the Warrant Committee will be heard, so I was curious what was pulled in.
So, they've since approved it, at the time this went to print, they had not finished hearing the capital budget committee, so that's been finalized.
Okay, so that's been approved, okay. So, I'll just color that whole thing in green now, then, okay?
And any updates to, by the time we get to town meeting, they will have taken action on all of these, and those are updated on the twenty-twenty-two town meeting website.
So, any discussion of Article Nine?
Nope, I am good.
No, Pete, no, so we have three-nothing vote recommending approval of Article Nine?
Yes.
Okay. I'm doing this informally, 'cause I think all we're doing is taking a vote recommending approval, it's not like an action, so. Anyone's wondering why we're being quite as casual, it seems like we can. Article Ten, transfer funds into the capital stabilization fund. So, this is the money going into the capital stabilization fund, and I believe this year, this, and this one is a fund we've never passed an override on, so. So far, so far, this particular stabilization fund has been funded each year by a unique and non-increasing tax levy approach that we had funds that we could put into it.
Right, last year we appropriated seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand from free cash, and this year it's two million. And then we anticipate the two million to be a two-year appropriation.
Meaning, this is half of the aid that we're getting, you're gonna have an equivalent amount next year for another two million, yes, is that what?
No.
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 See, this is why I wanna make sure.
This is two million from free cash, and we're anticipating that that two million into the capital stabilization fund fiscal year twenty-three's and twenty-four.
So, in other words, there's no guarantee that we're gonna find another rabbit to pull out of the hat?
Correct.
Next year, got it, okay. And I think, I think the intent was probably to try to hit, like, a million a year as the.
Yes, and the, we have discussed it with the capital budget committee, that if our funds are allowed and released by Norfolk County, that we would be using that for capital to extend the life of that two million dollar free cash.
Okay, okay, any questions on that? You have a three, three-nothing vote to recommend approval?
Yes.
Okay, so that one, we're good. The F, Article Eleven, FY twenty-three capital budget. Two million dollars in capital funds from a combination hundred thousand from the tax levy, one point one million from the capital stabilization fund, eighty-five thousand Parks and Rec revolving fund, three-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand water enterprise free cash, and three-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand sewer enterprise free cash. Any questions, comments on that one? We're good recommending approval of Article Eleven. Article Twelve, FY twenty-three water and sewer enterprise fund budget, so, uh, for those who pay attention to this stuff, I think it was just last year that we broke out the enterprise fund budgets as their own separate article. So, this was, as of last year, was sort of a changed way of doing business. Probably, you know, I can see it being an improved way of doing business, 'cause we're, we're giving better, or greater, better, but greater visibility of the water and sewer enterprise fund, so. That, and, and we basically asked the voters to separately approve those enterprise funds, so. Questions or comments on that one?
No.
Nope.
Nope.
Looks good.
So, we, good, three, all three of us recommending approval of that one, okay. Article Thirteen is paying old debt, old bills, and that one totaled out to four thousand eight-hundred-seventy-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents. We may be slow, but we're honest.
I'm gonna increase that by ninety-five dollars.
Oh, wait a minute.
Wait a minute, that's gonna have to go back through the Warrant Committee. Plus ninety-five dollars.
Plus ninety-five dollars.
That's gonna, well, it's gonna keep it under five thousand.
There was a bill that came in today.
Oh, that's so funny.
For what fiscal year?
Twenty?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, okay, so it, it always fascinates when we have ones that go back to two thousand nineteen, it's like, where were they? I, why did I do this? I guess it was because, oh, I guess I was just curious, this was one where there was no recommendation from the Warrant Committee, one way or the other, just.
They have approved it.
They have approved it, so we're good on that one, I can color that one in all green. Good. Article Fourteen, the new school building committee bylaw. I have issues.
And just to be clear, this is the one that they, that the moderator assigned?
This is the one that has the committee, yeah, this one is, yep. Let me, let me start with you, I don't have anything on your mind.
So, let me just go to what we have here.
That was the cloth.
You're going through it, I have, I, I see what they're doing, I, I, after what we just experienced, I think they're trying to bring a broader group of people in, varying backgrounds, different age groups, so, in, in the spirit of what I know we're trying to do, so we can get a school here, I support.
I was okay with it, too.
Okay, so I have the issues, let me tell you what they are. There's a couple of things on section, on paragraph L. It says, there's, at the bottom, last sentence, "The committee or the SBC as applicable shall meet with the applicant," so at this point, we're still talking about overall building committee rules. "Shall meet with the applicant department, and if the project is deemed viable by the committee or the SBC as applicable, shall present its findings to the Board of Selectmen for approval to start a feasibility study." The question I have on this is, how are we defining viable? What does it mean for a project to be viable? And in particular, the concern I have is that viability, in my mind, should include an assessment of the cost of that project as part of viability. Otherwise, I don't really know what viability means. So, that's one concern I have.
Just a quick question for that customer, so is that, is that new, or I was under the impression, and maybe I've got this wrong, that, that these, up until end, those, those would have been in place, so we, so we can tweak what was, what's.
This is a hold, yeah.
There's a, there, there's a sentence that, that's been added to L.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, my, my real, it's, it's actually just a question, I don't have a position, 'cause I don't know what viable means.
That's a totally legitimate.
Yeah, the, the deemed viable is in the existing covenant planning of building.
Do you know what, what, what did it mean in the existing, would you know?
I don't know if we defined it then.
So, to me, viable, I mean, I'm assuming we're only putting up buildings that are technologically feasible, so they're viable that way. Perhaps a building is, we undertake when we believe there is a validated need, so it could be viable in the sense that it's a building that we truly believe we need, based on some analysis of need. But my observation in this past year is that the issue of cost does not get brought in upfront with, with regard to expectations, but we tend to just kind of look at what we need and build up what we need and come out with a number, and then look around and wonder whether it's good or not. So, I actually think that if we're gonna do this at this early stage where we're deciding to launch, there should be a clear projected cost for that number, or it might be an envelope, it might be worst case, best case, but simply saying, what do you want? And, and then, under, under an undefined term viable, seems like it's deficient.
I completely, I completely agree with that.
Now, on the next page, in section, paragraph, paragraph P.
I would just say to you, Gus, on that point, that this is, this is very early on in the process, and so that it's, I, I think you need a lot of flexibility, if this is just a.
Well, what does viable mean, though, Pete?
It just means that it can probably be done, I mean, someone's making some sort of determination.
The pharaohs built pyramids.
The, the original, and I didn't draft this original bylaw, I simply reviewed it, but the original impetus was that there were various town boards, committees, interest groups who were off advocating for major capital projects, and in some cases, they were assuming the life of their own, and this was an attempt to put a screening process in place, so it, it means financially viable in some respect, whether in the context of town budgeting, what people can afford, whatever, but it's economics.
So, it's not clear to me that that was done with this last project, for sure. So, my point, I'm not against the idea that we would look at the viability of a project before we undertake it, I'm saying, I don't know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna improve this, we ought to improve it in a way that actually defines what that means, 'cause right now, it's sort of an empty word, it doesn't appear to me that we, if I had to try to say, well, how have we been defining viability? Might be, well, we want it, and, and that's not necessarily as precise as I'd like to see in light of what, what happened. So, sec, in paragraph P, sub-paragraph B, sub-sub-paragraph three, it says, "The Board of, so, the broader selectmen shall appoint four voting members to the SBC." So, now we're into just SBC requirements. "One appointment will be a current planning board member selected by the planning board to represent the planning board's interests, including, without limitation, the interests of the townwide master plan." The townwide master plan has no interest, it's a document. The planning board approved the townwide master plan, so to the extent that the town, the planning board wants to pursue or push for the things that are in the townwide master plan, the planning board already has the power to do that. So, I read that, and I said, first off, I don't know why there's any reference to the townwide master plan there other than if you wanted to say the planning board has its interests, you know, in pursuit of the, carrying out the townwide master plan, I'm good with it. But when it says, "including without limitation," what does that mean? What does it mean without limitation? The interests of a planning document? Makes no sense to me. So, that, I think, is deeply flawed, I'm actually surprised that they came up with that, and then if they go farther, "The other three appointments, so we're selecting four, we're appointing four, this paragraph is telling us who those four kind of will be." "The, the three appointments will be residents with expertise in pertinent areas such as architecture, building engineering, commercial or municipal construction, and/or construction slash law contracts, at least one of which appointees shall have expertise in energy sustainability measures, including knowledge of Medfield's energy goals to meet net zero." I have two questions, I have two reactions to that. First off, if the Board of Selectmen is going to be dictated on who our four appointees will be in such a narrow, specific way, when this is a bylaw that for, for the foreseeable future is what will be in place, which says, "The Board of Selectmen will have no discretion about deciding what particular interests should be represented." We already have a fairly weak Board of Selectmen in this town in terms of our authority. This is gutting the Board of Selectmen's power even more, and as far as I can tell, even more, to advance specific interests. That, there's nothing wrong with them, it's just that when it becomes a specification of who the Board of Selectmen shall appoint, that's the second out of four that we're basically told what that person will be.
Sure.
I'm just saying, look, if you don't want the Board of Selectmen to be involved in appointing people for building committees, then take the authority away from us and let other people be responsible and accountable for the buildings that come up. I find this totally unacceptable, because it is so restrictive and so narrow. So, that entire paragraph failed the smell test for me. First part, because I don't even know what it means, second part, because I actually resent the fact that someone would attempt to tell the Board of Selectmen how we need to make decisions when we are involved in appointing people for a building committee for schools. The other point about that, incidentally, when it comes to making sure that these are the people, why does it only apply to school buildings?
Right, right.
If you're gonna do this, shouldn't it apply to all of the buildings in town?
Sure.
So, I just find that paragraph completely flawed, I am opposed to this article based on that particular paragraph. Not opposed to what we're trying to do with the article, but, and I understand why we're trying to do it, but the, the idea that we lose all discretion to deal with issues here in town, that's not acceptable to me, so. I'm not on board with that one.
No, I, you know, I appreciate your insight on that, being, being the rookie in this chair, and not realizing to the detail of, of assigning people to the boards, and you guys have certainly done it more than myself, I don't disagree with what you just said there. I think that it's important that, you know, the people we would select, we would certainly be putting in a position to, to aid the efforts, not hinder the efforts.
I'm not at all sure, I, I don't, if I looked at what we would do, I actually think a lot of what we would do, using our own discretion is exactly what's here.
Sure.
And, and I think you can look back at some of the things that we're carrying out. And I think you can look back at some of the things that we're carrying out right now, and you can, you can see that we actually have done that. I just resent that this is being built into the bylaws that basically ties our hands and tells us what we have to do. It's like, just take us out of it. Let this be some other random group of people, rather than the executive board of the town exercising its judgment. My, my view on that.
So, let me ask a question on that. So, moving towards a town meeting, could this be modified at any point? Or is this something that would just not get supported at all?
Well, right now, as it's written, I'm not prepared to support it. This has already gone to the printers. So, I guess, if, just to be clear, that people that have been appointed to this committee, I'm a little bit stunned that this even got in there, the whole thing is fine, but I'm a little bit stunned that it made it in, because I have a pretty high regard for the people. So, I'm not attacking the people, I'm just saying that. I think, Christine, it's always possible to come into the town meeting with an amended article, because we've done that.
You can make an amendment on the one.
Right, so.
Within limits.
Yeah, well, this is, yeah, so, if this would, if the limits would allow for that to be corrected.
Well, ultimately, it's the moderator's discretion as to how substantial he feels the amendments are.
Yeah, so what I would think, from a process standpoint, between now and the 2nd of May, to the extent that anybody besides me feels this way about that particular section of the bylaws, and, and of lesser importance, that issue around defining viability, if the committee were able to come up with revised wording that addressed my concerns, and we knew that that was what the revised article was, and the moderator felt that the revisions were not substantive changes, I would be quite happy to turn, you know, to switch from being against it to being for it, because I'm not fundamentally against everything else that I tried to do. But as it stands right now, I'm against it.
So, I'm fine with it. I think that it makes absolute sense to have a planning board member on there.
Please.
I think it makes absolute sense to have people who have experience in the building of, buildings, of schools. And I think it makes absolute sense to have somebody with knowledge of the energy efficiency, the net zero goals of the town. We would have gotten to a net zero school a lot faster if we'd had one of those people last go out.
I disagree with that, I actually think that net zero helped contribute to why it failed.
I disagree with that.
So, we're in disagreement, Pete.
Yeah, we're in disagreement, yeah. So, I, I think this is fine the way it is. I mean, you, you're talking about three of the members, it's a very large board, and certainly, to have three of them have, have expertise in the building of schools is absolutely fine for me, so I don't have a problem with it. You know, the schools will, and the moderator will appoint whoever they do, so those could be those other people that you would refer to appoint apparently.
I didn't, I was not arguing with who you were to appoint. I was arguing with the board of selectmen not really having the discretion to be able to determine for the town
Exactly.
who it's most important to be on the board. In your case, Pete, it sounds like you don't care about being told. I do.
I, I, I don't mind having the discretion limited to people that are expertise in the area.
Right, I do.
Yeah, okay, I hear you.
But I definitely hear what you're saying, Gus, that, that if, as they're laying this out, now that you've opened my eyes to what's being done, is, some of these people could be appointed by other groups. But now, they're coming to the board of selectmen, saying, okay, you can pick four. By the way, already, we already picked two for you, so you really pick two. That, we've already, we've already defined who, who we want you to assign? And, and I think it is kind of odd that it's done in that manner. Instead of saying, you can pick four, obviously, they need to be residents, and obviously, we want expertise, but to, to, to your point, to really narrow it so tightly, it's kind of odd.
And Pete, to be hon, I mean, the issue isn't, oh, I don't think we should have somebody who knows how to put up buildings there. I actually, that piece of it, the idea that the selectman would be the one that would choose who, that has that building expertise, so that it would be somebody we're satisfied with, I don't, it's not the issue of, I don't think we need people who know about buildings on there. And it doesn't bother me that the board of selectmen is in the position to probably be the ones to make that determination. What bothers me is the specification of two out of four. That's the part that I find unacceptable.
Yeah, yeah. I can, I can operate within those parameters, that doesn't bother me.
Right. It's actually three out of four, probably. Yep, at least three out of four. So, anyway, that's where we stand on that one, sort of. I would just suggest we defer, you, you don't need to know our answers on the recommendations, so we, we can defer on that one for the time being.
The Warren Committee, just for everybody's knowledge, the Warren Committee is taking this article up next Wednesday.
The 14?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I guess I'll have to make sure they've heard what I've had to say.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't know if you were interested in taking any public comment. Megan Sullivan did raise her hand.
Sure. Let's see, you can, so Megan Sullivan, I see. Megan, come on, is that the only one? Thanks, Nick.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes, hey, Megan.
Hi, everybody. My only question is, I'm trying to get my head around this, and how it relates or doesn't include any relationship to the permanent building committee, which I think is maybe on purpose, but I think is a big reaction to the last plan? So, I'm, I'm just wondering what your thoughts are about that.
Good question, Megan. Is there nobody?
I can address it.
Go ahead, yeah.
So, it's a separate committee with a separate composition specifically for school projects.
Right, but I think Megan's question is, why is there no representation from the permanent planning building?
Right.
That would have to come from the committee that came up with this.
Yeah, that's a good catch, Megan. So, the permanent planning and building committee is on the building committees for the non-school. But, I missed that part.
So.
Great question, Megan.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So, just to put this in context, school building assistance has regulations which provide for a school project building committee, which they require to be established in each case where there is a project approved or to be approved by them. They specify what the composition of that will be. They are willing to look at a local bylaw, but they then make their own determination whether that satisfies their requirements or not.
Is that an MSBA statement that you're making, or is that just?
That's MSBA.
Okay.
Mark, I, when this came up with the other, with the last year's project, I thought, I thought there was a conversation that basically said, the MSBA does not overwrite what the requirements of a town are, but they may put added requirements on, which, which basically, if that's true, there's no reason why we couldn't have a member of the, you know, we couldn't specify a member of the permanent building committee to be on the school building committee.
Like I said, they spell out in their regulations what the composition should be. They will compare their requirements to the local bylaw and make their own determination whether that local bylaw, that local committee satisfies the requirements, and you can then use your committee that's already in place, or no, you have to start over, which is what happened here the first time around. The determination was made that the requirements we had in place for the permanent planning and building committee were too narrow in terms of the membership for what MSBA was going to require. And that's why they started, basically, an ad hoc committee.
Did, did that actually, so, did that actually involve us removing people from the committee? We started and then adding other people?
They formed a new committee.
But, but were the people on the old committee still there, and then we added more people? Or did we actually pull people off because the MSBA?
There was some overlap. I believe people came over from the permanent planning and building committee.
Everybody that was on.
That's, that's, so that's, that's what I'm saying. So, the MSBA could have required us to have a bigger committee, but they wouldn't say, well, your bylaws say, this is who has to be on the committee, you need to take this person off, and you need to add these other people.
It's more like they want to see certain composition on that committee.
Yeah, I get that.
They being MSBA.
Right, I get that. Chris?
Yeah, Chris Potts, Seven Curve. Mark, can you just clarify, though, the committee itself even clarified this, that the MSBA regulations actually are not mandatory, they're recommended. So, if you looked at forty-some compositions of school building committees from across the state, they're very, the, the composition of those committees vary greatly in terms of who's on it. There's some core, core positions that are always filled, like having construction expertise, but there's a, a range of people that serve on those committees. And through the review process, they did, I know it was Sarah Lemke and some of the attorneys that were on that committee, did, did specify a couple of times that the regulations itself do not make it mandatory, it's just recommended. So, I mean, you can talk to that better than I can, but they were just reading from the regulations.
There's the regulations as they exist, in theory, on paper, as anybody from the outside might read them, and then there's the actual practice of how they operate at school, MSBA, and how they apply them.
Yeah, Mark, I'm just trying to get a feel for whether the likelihood, if we had, if we had a configuration that we said, this is our committee, I'm trying to picture the likelihood that the MSBA would say, no, we don't like this position that you have on your committee, take it off. I can see the MSBA saying, you need to have these other positions or these other members, because we have certain concerns, so I can see it getting bigger, but, but I'm.
I don't think they would knock people off. I think they would simply say, we want to see this representation there. More people from the school administration, or more people from whatever. And they actually suggest also people with expertise in the building industry.
Yeah, so, if, if, you know, just theoretically, if we had a requirement for a member of the permanent building committee to be on this building committee, and let's say the MSBA saw absolutely no value whatsoever in having somebody from a town's permanent building committee on the building committee, they wouldn't say you have to get rid of them, they might, but they might force you to put another person with another kind of expertise on, so you'd wind up with a bigger committee.
Particularly, again, people from the school background, if you had a limited depth. And as far as appointed, elected, whatever the process is, they don't get into that nitty-gritty either. They're, they're willing to defer to how you go about doing the selection process. They're looking at the qualifications, and for lack of a better term, that they want to see on the committee.
I did note, I did note a little nuanced clause in this bylaw that, aside from the part that specifically talks about selectmen not being on it, there's an earlier clause that says, no town employee can be on it. So, now that we've just approved our $900 town employee salary, we were, we were eliminated on the first page before we ever got to the, the specific passage there. I did get a chuckle out of that. Okay. Any other comments? Megan, thanks for the, that point, because I actually think that's another worthwhile point to ask whether a member of the permanent building committee should be on that. All right. I guess now we can go on to Article 15. I wonder if Scott's timing us to see if these guys can't get through this by 10 o'clock. I'm in trouble.
Your indication.
Yeah, it's just a, sort of a test run. So, Article 15 is to amend the town charter, to change the name of the board of selectmen to Select Board. There's a whole bunch of specific editorial changes that have to be made to affect that. This article, if it passes, will still require confirmation in the, in an election, which will probably take place in March of 2023. So, this is like a dead override, you have to approve the article, and then.
And then if it passed?
Huh?
And then if it passed, then we would have to go back and put in a prophylactic change in all the bylaws to bring them into compliance.
Okay, so, at any rate, administratively, this may take a while even yet, but the first step in this long process is to get the, the voters to pass judgment on Article 15. Any discussion?
Nope. I didn't want to ask Mark.
Okay.
Because we spoke earlier, they want it, so.
Yeah, okay.
That prophylactic change in the bylaws that you're talking about, is that just wording changes to make sure it's up for him to, for the selectmen?
Yeah, and once the charter is changed, then, then it may be as simple as one bylaw that applies, an amendment that applies to all bylaws, and says, wherever one term is used, substitute this term. Right throughout it, rather than have to go through, plus, we gave the town clerk authority some years ago to do editing. So, that, in combination, should make that part easier.
Okay.
When does the name change become official, then, at the, at the election?
Next year, yeah.
So, you wanted to run for reelection?
I have to give you a sign.
Okay, any comments? We, three, three in favor of recommending approval? Recommend approval, so three, nothing, recommend approval. 16 is amending the zoning table use to include food cantries. Was it food cantries? Meaning, that's a truck, but it's a cantry, because it's?
No, it's, it's the food cupboard.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Some of those food cantries, it's community facility for distribution of food and testing.
Okay. It opens.
It'll allow.
So, so, so there was an issue when they were looking for another location from the church, where the zoning didn't permit it, and that was standing in the way. So, this was put in place to facilitate being able to relocate
Okay.
the food cupboard.
Okay.
Any discussion, everybody in support?
Yes.
Three, nothing, recommend approval. 17, amending the zoning map, which is, this is, this is correcting the well area designations on the map for well 3A. There was a mistake, I believe, in the 2, Chris will know this. It's the 2,000-foot linear dimension that was on the map incorrectly, as I recall. So, basically, you're, we're correcting an error on the map to make sure that it's properly the linear.
You're matching the map to the words.
Yes, we're matching the map to the words. I like that.
All right.
We good, three, nothing there? I assume recommend approval, okay. 18, appropriate funds for the, an elementary school feasibility study. This is, so, my only question on this one, have we gotten a request from the school committee for these funds?
We have not.
Appropriate for us to, not that we're against it, but it's not appropriate for us to.
So, we had this conversation with the Warren Committee at the last meeting, and they have decided to approve it, pending the request to come, they don't want to create a feasibility study without, not have it designed to them to take the process. So, they are hoping that the school committee is going to start the process.
Well. What I'm getting at is that this is, I, I think Jess Riley's listening, so if, if not, I can follow up with her. I don't want to be, what, what, the alarm bell that goes off for me is, why wouldn't the schools? Is there a reason why the school committee has a reservation? And if there is, I'd like to know what it is before I go and recommend approval of an article that may or may not represent what the school committee wants to do. So, I, I may not, maybe I'm missing a nuance here, but it seems to me it would make more sense to wait until we know for sure what the school committee wants us to do before we just kind of decide to.
So, why don't we hold on this one?
Yeah, we just hold on that one, yeah, okay. So, that's a hold. Without, what did it say, hold without prejudice?
I'm starting to sound like a lawyer.
I've been with you here for five years, Pete, I have to pick something up on this. Open space and recreation plan is 19? Oh, before we go to 19, just, just, this is just a question. On 18, the funding for 250,000, 180,000 of that comes from the MSBA grant reimbursement interest account. That's the other, that's that longstanding account? Okay, I just want to make sure that, because we put the MSBA reimbursements in one place, and, okay, that's that other account.
So, it's been transferring this interest account to the municipal building establishment? Then transferred again, we're trying to save accounting.
Yeah, no, that's, that's good, I'm good with that, I just wanted to be sure I was, my score sheet was right. So, Article 19 is $25,000 for the costs associated with the preparation of an open space and recreation plan. I'll start with you, are there any questions? I have some, so.
Sure.
To be honest, I'm not well-versed in this one, so I'd be happy to hear what you have to say.
Okay.
I know, I know that we need it, so I'm in favor of it from that standpoint.
So, I have two, two issues. Number one, what's the $25,000 for?
It's hiring consultants to complete the plan.
So, that's what bothers me a little bit, because what we're doing is we're hiring consultants to do the planning work, and I'm not convinced the planning work is being, is going to get done properly. The issue I have, I'm not against open space, this town has a lot of open space. I do have an objection to the town asking voters to pay for land, to accrue land, that we show absolutely no commitment to maintaining, taking care of, or making available to people. I specifically asked the townwide master plan, as part of their charter, to come up with a plan for the maintenance of open. their charter to come up with a plan for the maintenance of open space. And I was told that they viewed it as being sort of in the weeds and not worth their concern. That did not make me even remotely happy, because what we have is an issue that's still here. So, if we're going to do an open space plan, I don't want a pink puppies and unicorn plan. Let's have a spaghetti dinner and bring everybody in and ask them about the land that they want. I want a real plan that has real maintenance plans that, that says how we're going to maintain the things that we buy. And the first step of that is, how do we maintain the stuff that we have? And then we can talk about buying more stuff. But I don't perceive this to be the plan that's going to get us there. I perceive this to be yet another document that's going to come out and say, the people of Medfield want more open space. And it's going to be used as an open-ended checkbook to say, the people said they want it. So, I, I want some accountability and responsibility in here around the maintenance of that open space. And once we demonstrate the commitment and the ability to do that, to include potentially paying for it, because some of this probably does cost money, once we know that we have that commitment to take care of what we have, I'm delighted to entertain other opportunities to expand the open space in town. It's, it's one of the strategies we have for keeping us from being turned into a, an overdeveloped community that we really don't want. But right now, I, I'm not in favor of this for that reason, not because of the purpose, but because I am absolutely frustrated at this town's lack of discipline and accountability around how we take care of the land that we take care of. And I was absolutely specific in my request when we did the townwide master planning, and it got blown off. So, I guess we'll put a hold on that.
Yeah.
So, let me just.
Sure.
Say a couple of things about that, Gus. As far as the townwide master plan, I mean, that really, it's not really the appropriate thing for the townwide master plan to be doing.
Of course it is.
The, the Conservation Commission is tasked with doing this open space and recreation plan, I think. And, and part of the problem has been that the Conservation Commission was trying to do it on a volunteer basis. One of the members was trying to do it on their own, and it just never got done. I think it actually eventually did get done, didn't it, Chris? But it's, I mean, the timing is such that it needs to be redone.
Yeah, it, it took over six years to complete it. And so, we're, and we did not get a full approval on the plan. We have a conditional acceptance. So, by not having an active open space and recreation plan, you're not eligible for grants.
So, it, it ties our hands if we don't have this. So, that, I, I agree with you that we don't, we don't spend money on the land that we have. I hear this from the Conservation Commission, because I happen to have a close relationship with a Conservation Commission member.
Right.
Who tells me all the time that, that the town doesn't spend money. They, they asked the Conservation Commission to maintain and run the, the, these lands for the town, but the, the town never gives the Conservation Commission any money to do it. Several years, a decade, I don't, 10, 15 years ago, we, we started spending money on, on trying to keep some of the ponds healthier, environmentally healthier, trying to keep from the eutrophication from, from occurring. But, you know, we, we ran into financial difficulties, and so that, that was one of the things that got cut out. And I don't think we're doing that anymore. So, the, we have a problem in that, you know, how much do you want your taxes to be in this town? So, that we just, there are a lot of things we just don't do, unfortunately. And maintaining our, our lands is one of the things. I agree that, I think we should, but I don't know that there's much appetite for people in town to be paying more taxes.
We should be buying more open space.
So, part of, and I, I will refer you to Dave Henkels, who's the Conservation Commission agent, put together, it's a three-page explanation of the plan. And part of the plan does state, we'll recommend a budget for the maintenance of townwide open space.
Yeah, it's more than budget. It's, it's allocation of responsibilities is, there's, there's, see, that's why I don't think you give a consultant $25,000 and get this, this answer. It may be that to do it, to do what I'm asking for may be more expensive than that to get a, a plan, or maybe we put together a really quick plan that meets the letter of the law to be eligible for grants and then leverage those grants. But what I actually see, and, and Pete, I actually think that you're sort of reinforcing the point, is we don't take care of the land that we have. So, a plan that's going to talk about how we're going to add to that land doesn't make sense to me. I, I am open, first up, I appreciate your point, Pete, about how, I don't, I don't agree with townwide master plan part, but I do appreciate the point you're making about the Conservation Commission basically trying to do this on a shoestring. And Christine, I will listen, because you didn't know I was going to come in with this tonight. I will listen to an, if there's an argument I'm not understanding here around why this relatively small $25,000 expenditure gets us something, that gets us that maintenance and the clear allocation of responsibility, I'm okay with that. But right now, when I read this, this sounds to me like this is public involvement, which means pink puppies and unicorns about, yes, we want more land, and that will be what we'll conclude, and we'll say, we need more land. And I just think that's irresponsible right now.
Getting this done is a requirement for these state grants, so that if we don't do this, we are going to become ineligible.
But I don't know that you need to hire a, a $25,000 consultant to do that if you just need to get a.
Who's going to do it? Who's going to do it, Gus?
Well, depends how well, it all depends. Well, you got to start.
I'm a member of the, of the Conservation Commission.
Yeah, take what we have and update it, and there's our plan.
So, that is an option. I just, I'd be remiss if I did not remind you that you put in my goals to come up with what our existing open space land and whose management that is. So, that does fall under my.
It's bad time to, how are you coming on?
It's great. It's really, it's one of the.
Well, as I, as I, as I said, I will, I, I blindsided you with that one, Christine. So, I'm willing to listen, I'm willing to listen to what I don't understand here that would lead me to say, hey, guys, let's, let's go for this $25,000. It's not the money. It's the focus.
I know, I understand that. So, I'm actually going to have Dave Henkels from the Conservation Commission reach out and have a conversation with you directly about that. I don't want to speak for the Conservation or for Dave, but I will send you all the three-page summary that we put together for that.
So, I'm going to suggest we just put that on hold.
Yep.
And, okay, so we put that one on hold. So, Article 20 is a citizen's position, petition to amend existing or proposed town permanent planning and building bylaw and/or any proposed school building project bylaw to include, include a requirement that at least one public hearing shall be held before the lead project committee votes on a new site for a school or town building or do or act anything in relation thereto.
Well, the spirit, I think, of what just went down, and for the citizens that are saying, hey, we would like to make sure that going forward, we get a voice, that there's no chance that it can be compressed into one meeting, I absolutely see where this is coming from. And I think it's sending the right signal that we heard what maybe didn't go so well, and we want to reinforce going forward. That never happens again.
Okay. Pete?
I'm fine having a public hearing. I think it's, public hearings are always a good idea.
So, my only issue here on this one, I actually put it as a no, but not because I'm against what it does. It seems to me this is redundant to the requirement that's in the broader school building or, or building bylaw revision. There is a place in there that talks about having to have that kind of a hearing. So, if the other article passes, this seems to be redundant to me. If it doesn't pass, then it's not redundant, and so it would be a more modest change. So, I put it down as a, as a no, not because I'm actively against it, but because I wanted to ask the question in tonight's meeting, does it make sense to retain a redundant article, recognizing there's no guarantee that the article that it's redundant with is going to be passed? What I was wrestling with is, so the selectman presumably at some point would recommend approval of the bylaw change that the bylaw committee came up with, and then we're going to recommend approval of the redundant article, so.
So, I assume, without speaking for the moderator, that he will take this up in conjunction with the other amendment.
Okay.
And for those, and I believe some are present who submitted this, the motions are going to need to be specific in terms of where you're proposing to insert this, in the existing bylaw or this draft bylaw or both. So, if you need assistance with that language between now and town meeting, I'm happy to help you, but it's going to have to be fairly specific.
So, that might be.
Well, I just, Chris, if you can clarify, I know there was some discussion about this at the Warren Committee, that the proposed school committee bylaw does not address your concern in the citizen's petition that it would be any town.
Correct, correct. Yeah, so it, so it covers the school building piece, but it does not cover the, the, all the other town buildings.
Got it.
That's not what it says.
It's a.
The other bylaw.
So, the other bylaw covers, yeah.
Yeah, this one says a school or town building. Yep.
Right, exactly. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thanks.
So, in all, just to, in the absence of this, if you were going to cite a town building or a school on land that's not currently being used for those purposes, in all likelihood, it would require a two-thirds town meeting vote anyway to change the use.
Like, the closest thing I can think of that's a clean example would be when we approved the COA putting a building up on Ice House Road. Interestingly, the wording around this, around new site, and I'm thinking particularly of the, of the school issue, is when you are putting a, you know, to go back to the arguments from last fall, you say, well, it's the new, it's the Dale Street School project. Well, the Dale Street School isn't this entity that's somewhere. It's like, it's a school project. If you put a school on the Wheelock site, that still is a school site. So, I was, I found myself wondering in the wording of that bylaw, what constitutes, what if, what if you don't call anything Dale Street School, you change the name of the school? Or what if you change the configuration of grades in town to where there is no exact replica of the original school? How does that play out? I, I, I'm sure we'll figure it out when we hit the, hit that spot. But so, Mark, the issue I had was I didn't want, it seems kind of stupid for the Board of Selectmen to recommend approval of one article and then recommend approval of a different article that basically duplicates it, but.
The article's almost a placeholder, and in this case, you really need to see the specific proposed motions to be able to take a position on it, and would be my recommendation to you.
You'd recommend we hold until.
And encourage the proponents to get their proposed motions in or work with the committee to incorporate that, so you don't need this article, if that's possible?
I mean, I can see, you said either, you know, either the new or the existing. I concede the option would probably be both, because it would be, well, doesn't matter if the other one doesn't pass. We would want this to survive, we would want this to insert in whatever the operative bylaw is. So, that's probably not a hard decision, I don't think, is it? As a proponent?
I just actually want to ask Mark to clarify what you just said about if you were to cite a town building in a new location, that would have to come to town meeting? So, like, if Park and Recreation wanted to build their facility up at, on the, you know, the, on.
McCarthy Park.
McCarthy. Would that have to come before town meeting, that decision?
It depends whether, if, I, I should have said, generally speaking, if they have land that already under the care, custody, control that can accommodate a new building, then no.
Oh, okay.
Although frankly, to build it, they're going to need, in all likelihood, borrowing authority, which is a two-thirds vote at town meeting anyway. But if, if it were, by default, the, the Board of Selectmen has care, custody, control of any land that's under a specific board of commission. So, as Gus gave the example, we, there was a transfer by town meeting to COA for that, the COA facility as part of that development. So, so typically, town meeting is going to be involved. Somebody, other than town, at some point, you end up at town meeting and somewhere in the process, if not deciding, then certainly the borrowing. So, if you want it earlier, that's fine, but that doesn't bind town meeting anyway, so.
Thanks.
Well, so, well, I guess we put it on hold now until we know for sure what that article is really going to say and how it's going to work. But again, my comments weren't because I was against the substance of the article. I was just, from a process standpoint, wasn't sure whether it made sense. So, we'll put that one on hold. The final one is Article 20, 22 is free cash, which we don't do anything with. Article 21, appropriate funds to repair a portion of the roof at the Blake Middle School and the high school gyms. That's just a special appropriation to take care of a capital improvement. Comments on that one?
No, it makes sense.
Pete? Yeah, and I'm on that. So, that's three, nothing, recommend approval. All right. That's it for the.
Christine, I have a question.
Sure.
So, we have, going to have a very, I think, intense three months coming up on the environmental issues at the hospital. And this would be probably the second year in a row where we haven't put any money in for an environmental, you know, legal consultant and everything else. Are we going to have sufficient funds to cover?
We think, we think we're fine. And as I mentioned earlier, we've increased the reserve funds.
Great. You know my concerns. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
All right. I knew that would be a little long. Is, do we have Justin? We haven't yet closed the public hearing, I guess, if Justin is here, or. Maybe we just, maybe we just defer that till.
Now, you got to continue it.
Can we continue it till next Tuesday?
Continue it? Continue it to next Tuesday? Okay, okay.
At a specified time.
Seven o'clock.
And I guess, I don't know if this helps anybody, if anybody is listening, but the inconsistencies in the requested time periods, we are assuming that this is the time period specified on Justin's application, not the longer time periods that the other applicants.
I will, I will have Brittany follow up with them tomorrow morning, wanting to ensure that they'll be here next Tuesday and to clarify.
I think we had an earlier unrelated hearing where somebody was kind of open-headed and kind of pushed it out as far as they could, and then drew it back. And the question is, what was the least amount of time you needed?
Yeah. Okay. Let's see, next. So, this is continued. Discuss submission of statement of interest to the Massachusetts State, Massachusetts School Building Authority. I understand we do not yet have that final statement of interest, so it's not actionable at this point. Jess Riley said she would be on in case we had questions, and I don't know that if we don't have the SOI, we probably don't have questions, but certainly I would, if she's on and if she has anything that she wants to say, you can raise your hand and we'll, we'll let you do that. The only, I'm jumping ahead here only because it's materials. The thing that we did get was the required form of vote to submit the statement of interest. There was a statement below that says, please be sure that the priorities in the vote which match the priorities for which the SOI will be submitted. I assume this is a form that's just telling us how to, what it's supposed to look like, because the priorities here were repair to a building and then building a new one. It's like, that's backwards. But this is just, this is just instruction. Got it. Okay. Do you want to talk anything about the SOI?
No.
In the absence of the SOI?
No, no, I think, more importantly, I think we're also waiting for a response. I know that Chris sent some good questions, and I, and I actually asked Denise a lot of questions about the MSBA, the process we go forward, and we haven't received anything back. So, I think what's important is the next seven days, hopefully, we will get some feedback. Did you hear anything?
Where do we get back from?
Were you, were you, were you, did you share the email that went to Denise and to Sean?
Yes, I shared it with everybody.
No, I saw that. I saw that, but we have not communicated with the MSBA.
No, we, no, but the MSBA, what we were asking, the, the, well, I don't want to speak for you, Chris, but I, I asked Denise some of these questions at, on Election Day about working through the process, because she is very, Denise is very pro, rightfully so, for the MSBA. Since we've already gone through it once, there are changes. Can it be tweaked? Because we, do we have to start as if we were rookies? Or after everything that's went through, are there things that we can ask the MSBA? And I haven't heard anything. I don't believe you've heard anything. And if, if we go into this, let's go into this with our eyes wide open, and we have time between now and the 29th.
Let me, let me counter that perspective a little bit. School project is first and foremost, the school committee.
Talk about that or not.
As we've talked about this since the failed vote, there's an open issue around whether we will, you know, go and pursue MSBA funding relative to what we define as the school that we want and what's possible and what's not. I am, I think we all should be, citizens, officials, everybody, should be reluctant to decide that we want to get in on the game before the school committee has a chance to develop the same strategy for doing that. If you choose to ask questions of the MSBA before you've even decided what you want to do, you're sending information to the MSBA of what you're thinking about. That will inevitably have an influence on how the MSBA thinks about things. That will inevitably have an influence on how the MSBA thinks about things. At this point in time, we don't know exactly what it is we want to do, we don't know whether it does or doesn't fit in with the MSBA. I do think there's an appropriate time for us to sit down with the MSBA and say, here's what we've got in mind, help us understand this. But if we start having early-stage theoretical discussions with the MSBA, with nothing on the table, not even a statement of interest yet finalized, we have an awful lot of people who are sticking their fingers into a pie that undoubtedly will have an impact on where we come out. And, and I'm, you know, as much as we had a rough road before, we have a different kind of rough road to try to pull out of here, and I'm very reluctant, in this particular, I go after the schools a lot of times when it comes to budgets. This is a case where I think it's important that we give the schools the room to figure out what it is they want to do. I want them to communicate it, I want them to make it clear to everybody, so that piece of it we need to know, but when everybody starts talking, I was mad, I'm bringing up something I shouldn't bring up again, Pete, I was mad when a letter went into the state while we were negotiating a school contract, a school project with the MSBA, encouraging the state to tell the MSBA to make net zero mandatory requirement, because that influenced what we did. And I'm just saying, it's, it's a, it's a counterproductive thing for us to do if everybody wants to freelance.
Well, don't call it, you can call it freelance if you want, but, but I think what's important is, I've heard the superintendent at multiple meetings say, you know, the town would be foolish if they don't go back in the MSBA process. So that being said, all I'm trying to do, I'll, I'll wear the citizen's hat, is to educate myself on what can, what, what should we be thinking about, what is engraved in stone, we don't have any wiggle room, what can we be learning, though I know Nick will even shoot down the table, too. I know you, you have experience with the MSBA, so just to, to, to ground myself, again, being, wearing the citizen's hat, I'm not making any statements on behalf of the town. I, you know, I have Denise broaching me saying, you know, don't have, you know, don't have a no attitude. I'm like, well, I have, I'm not, I don't have an attitude. I, I want to learn more, because we didn't get a school last go-around, we want to get a school. Right? And that's all, that is 100% where I'm coming from, but I've heard the most senior leader in the schools say, Bedfield, you got to do this. So I'm hearing them say they want to do it, now we need the SOI to make sure we understand what we're supporting.
So I would, so I would differentiate a superintendent saying that we should do something from the decision a school committee needs to make.
Sure.
That says they're going to do it. My point is, when you choose to talk to state agencies on town, on town issues, you have to be thoughtful about which agencies you talk to, what it is you talk to them about, and when you talk to them. And I don't think that leaving that open for whoever wants to do it, whenever they want to do it, on whatever they want to talk about, is likely to help us.
But if it's Denise, I'm not saying I'm going to sit across from McCarthy, that I'm, but it's, I've got our, our town rep saying...
You want to talk to the reps, I think that's fine, both as citizen or as town officials. I'm very, very leery, we, we just had a project that got voted down that the MSBA supported.
Right.
And Plan A for us right now, if we choose to go the MSBA route, which is still an open question.
Right.
Is, and we want to get back into that program next December, if that's the route we take, that's Plan A. And I'm looking and saying, so the more uncertain, the more we ask questions about, you're going to do this, oh, you won't do that, the more we create the impression that these guys aren't serious. So if, if the intention is to make sure that even if we choose to go MSBA, we've reduced our chances of being accepted, at least being accepted right away, okay, but if we are actually interested in truly trying to do that, if we decide that's the right thing to do, I don't think this helps our chances. That's, that's it. I'm not talking about Denise, I'm talking about direct, direct conversations with Denise.
Oh, yeah, no, no, no.
So when you said, we haven't gotten answers back from them, my question was, who sent them the questions?
Well, it wasn't, wasn't to the MSBA, it was to our reps, and so our reps are, are trying to support us and...
Well, if they, yeah, if Denise has answers, that, that, welcome that.
Yep.
Absolutely. So. Go ahead, Chris.
So I just want to give you a little bit more perspective. So when we were in the midst of the controversy around site selection, we, I looked, I did the research and looked at the fact that Coffey Town Ipswich, in one case it was a town official and another case it was citizens, who wrote to the MSBA and asked for direction as to how they would handle, for example, an extension. Would they do an extension in this, in this, in a certain scenario? MSBA came back with very detailed, a very detailed response and advisory opinion about how they would view it. It was very helpful to look at both of these letters. When we were in the same situation, over 100 people signed a letter to MSBA, asking the very same questions, how would they handle this particular situation? MSBA, and MSBA came back and said, you need to work with your town officials. Now, we asked our town officials, could you write to MSBA and ask these questions? Because obviously, they're not going to ask, answer the questions of citizens. We got no response. And so, we could have stayed in the program, had we actually asked some of these questions of MSBA and only lost one year, we would still be in the program. So the questions that we're trying to get answered now by MSBA, and actually, if you look at the MSBA website, they specifically say, they encourage questions, they will not take any questions after April 29, but they will entertain questions from town officials, from anybody, well, mostly town officials, if I went to them, they would answer my questions, but they will entertain questions about the statement of interest process, but they will not do that after April 29, 29. Now, the questions that we're asking are not specific to the, to our, our, you know, ideas around the project, they're specific to things like, when you've already had a failed vote and you've already gone through the process, how much of the information, for example, that they've already gotten from us, how much of that could they possibly reuse? Could they shorten our timeline from the estimated five to seven years to, say, three to four years, or four to five years? How much, how much of the timeline that they impose on the district, are they, do they have the ability to shorten that, or what are the parameters for how they might shorten it? We were told last year that MSBA would not consider, would not fund a shared use facility. Well, one of the questions that we asked to them that they would not answer unless a town official asked was, what are the parameters around that? Is it like it yes or no? No, we will not fund a shared facility, or is it, you know what, we would allow a shared facility under these circumstances, you would have to segregate your funds in this way, or this way, or this way. These are, these are not questions that would, would dictate to MSBA that we are not serious about proceeding through the process, or that we have a preconceived notion. These are fundamental questions that we tried to ask last year that we could not get answers to, and no one seems to be willing to ask these questions now, in terms of...
True. And because you're, you're, basically, we were making changes in this process, I think there's a lot of people that have taken, in fact, I think there were a lot of people that were aware even last year about things that didn't go the way it probably would have been nice to have gotten, let me put it that way, everybody's got an opinion. My point is, as we move forward with this, I'm, I'm very concerned about this boat not still rocking back and forth, that we figure out how to be very thoughtful and deliberate on this, and one of the things, if we're going to succeed at this, is that as a town, we find a way to, the school committee's going to figure out what lessons they want to take, and they have to figure out how they want to do things. A building committee, which is going to be probably redefined one way or the other as a result of, of these articles that will be up for vote in May, is going to lead to a building committee that is, that is intentionally being modified to try to get at, structurally get at some of the issues that I think you're calling out as shortfalls. But at the end of the day, if we have people who agree to serve on a building committee, and we have a bunch of other people who say, well, we'll let you do it as long as we like to, we like what we see, and if we don't, we're going to go on an open loop, and we're going to try to have conversations on our own, that affects the ability to be successful. Not saying that physicians don't have the right to do whatever they please, whenever they please, however they please, but I do think, if you, if you're serious about wanting to see something go through, you have to be thoughtful about how that comes across, and if you have a committee that's configured the way that people think it needs to be configured to be responsive, you need to be prepared to commit to supporting that committee and trusting the leadership of that committee to take it in the right direction. Means you got to make sure all the parameters are in place ahead of time, but you can't just simply second guess committees, because I'll tell you, if, if you're on a committee where everyone goes second guess you, then it's like, then you do the work.
But this isn't, but this isn't second guessing this committee, I mean, there's some arguments out there that, even Mike Marcucci made this argument, that this school building committee, once it's constituted, should be the one who should be doing the analysis of whether or not we reapply to MSBA.
Yeah.
I mean, we have no, we have, we have no data in our hands right now regarding the pros and cons from a cost standpoint.
You're right.
So, I mean...
So I don't know how you'd answer the question right now, that's the whole point.
So, I...
What are you saying?
But, the issue is, if we, if we apply to the MSBA and we get in right away in December, okay, there is still a cost factor, a cost associated with going through the MSBA process if we decide to pursue that in December. I, I don't care how many people say, well, we can just pull out, we get accepted and they don't, they can't meet our needs, we can just, we can just say, no, thanks. It, it doesn't work that way.
Why not?
Okay, so, I have been on the side of, corporate side, when people have applied for community grants, and it's a competitive process. I've been on the nonprofit side, where I've written grant requests to send to community, to state agencies, or to nonprofit agencies. In either scenario, if you take the time to apply for a grant, and you get in, and you go back to that organization, and you say to them, sorry, we're not going to pursue this because it really, we've learned it doesn't meet our needs, it's not the right thing to do, and especially in a competitive process, where MSBA is going to deny somebody access to the program.
So let's go with that, so you're making a good point. If we sat and waited until the MSBA made its decision before we revealed our own decision, that would be, I agree with you, that would be irresponsible. I think the implication here is, we need to know whether we're going to go MSBA before the MSBA makes the decision, because the proper responsible thing for us to do is, if we decided not to do it, is to tell the MSBA, you know, we appreciate it, we applied, we wanted to see, but the school we want looks like this, your program doesn't allow us to do this, therefore, we realize we have to go out on our own, and we want to let you know that before you make the final decision. That's how to do that properly.
Well, that's, this is, I appreciate this, it's the first time that I've heard that, because everyone else has been saying, we're going to wait for December, and come December, if they're not going to meet our needs, we're going to pull out. So this is the first time that I've heard that perspective, and I appreciate that.
That's how I think we have, that's how I, I mean, that's, I think we should look at it, which does let us start the clock with MSBA right now, and then does let us form a building committee, and then that building committee's got some work to do to get to a concept for the school about, my, my problem with how we've thought about the MSBA is, it seems like suddenly their procedures took over, we, we no longer were thinking about the school we needed, we were thinking about the school that the MSBA would be willing to pay for, or help pay for. I think we need to go through the process that says, this is the school that we need. Now, MSBA, here's what we're doing, we're building a school, you know, what it, what it looks like is this, is this something that we're qualified, you know, that, can we, can we get this, we'd love to have your money, but this is what we need. So we know what we want before we start going into final decisions with the MSBA, and I think in order to do that, you have to do it before they get to the decision.
So, but do we know, do we know what their, their own process timeline is? Do we know at what point in time between now and December that they will need to hear from us in terms of where our own direction is?
At the point that we...
That's a really important question.
Yeah, no, I agree with that, but at the point that we apply for, you put it in the statement of interest, and we presumably get the articles at the town meeting passed, and we form that building committee, that's the point where I think it's appropriate for the building committee to say, what's your timeline? We're trying to put a school together, we don't know whether that school's going to, you know, whether you're going to support that school or not, but we also don't want to, like, throw you under the bus, so what's your timeline? When would you need to know, or when, you know, when do we need to show you what we have in mind, you'll give us an indication whether it's doable or not for MSBA. I, I agree with that, sure.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things, too, I just want to call out in terms of MSBA's own language, this is in their frequently asked questions. Options for project scope or potential new school, addition, renovation, or repair project, the district must indicate if a potential consolidation is being considered. In the SOI section entitled District Goal for School, the district should also provide information about what the district feels is a potential solution to the issues that have been identified in the SOI. There has been no discussion about that point, nothing. So you're going to get that SOI, that draft SOI, next week, when, or whenever you're going to get it, and you're going to, and, and as a community, we have no information about any of the thoughts around this at all, where the school committee is leaning. They have had no discussion about this.
So when's the next school committee meeting? Do we know?
Not until May, I don't believe.
So, anyway, the, the bottom line point for me is, we have town boards, town committees who have jobs to do, and people who are on them, I'm mindful of the need, if they're not doing it right, then I think you get the knockdown, drag-out arguments that we've kind of had, but if we are getting it to what we want, I'm, I'm very thoughtful, I mean, I'm very reluctant to get too far down the road around what a school needs to be, because I honestly do believe it's the school committee that should be kind of primarily defining that. I have other opinions about it, but that's not, I, I don't think it's us that should be trying to tell them that. On the other hand, I also want to make sure we're not making it harder by putting up a lot of smoke and dust before we're at a point where we can do it effectively, productively, that's all.
I'm going to, I'm going to give you a copy of this analysis that I did, and you guys can take it, but in the meantime.
Okay, thanks.
Possible, can I just?
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
I know it's a long night, Jerry Pott, Seven Curve Street.
This isn't, this is not even nine o'clock yet, Jerry, what are you talking about?
Yeah, I know, it's a late night, I could go on a while, no. So, first of all, I wanted to thank you, Gus, for pushing to have the public forum, the joint meeting. Unfortunately, I had a work commitment that night, and I couldn't make it. So after all of that, and, and watching you push that in a good way to get the dialogue starting, and the clock starting on how we get the 67-plus percent to vote yes on a school, I, I appreciate that both you and Mike Marcucci have articulated what went wrong, and that the process failed. It didn't mean the people failed, it didn't mean good volunteers didn't put a lot of effort in, but none of us were happy not to walk away with the school. Unfortunately, since then, and this is the first public meeting I've spoken at, I've kept my mouth shut, and I've attended, and I've listened, and now I'm at a point where I'm worried, and I'm worried because you keep mentioning that the school committee needs to take the lead on this. Unfortunately, every meeting I've attended of the school committee, the reason that the vote didn't pass was because of misinformation and noise. Fifty-two percent of the town...
Misinformation and what?
Noise.
Noise.
This has been repeated often, and personal vendettas that Chris and I are against Dr. Marsden, as though we would spend a year and a half of our lives fighting something because we're, what, in third grade? We have a personal vendetta. We don't. We want a great school, we want it in the right place. So, my point on this is, until the school committee acknowledges that we do have major data points that have been taken, there was a survey that showed people wanted it at Dale. There was a town meeting a year ago that said people did not want it at Wheelock. There was a very well-attended, 4,000, you know, there hasn't been one incident, it's not misinformation and noise, it's democracy, it's our voices, and at this point in time...
Jerry, I want to stop you on something here, and it's only my opinion, I don't believe any of those votes said that we want a school at Dale. Every one of those votes...
Can I, can I finish, Gus? No, no.
Let me just make the one point, every one of those votes sent us a message that the town was divided, 50-50, 48-52, that's all those votes told us.
Can I respectfully disagree?
Yeah, well, sure you can.
We need 67 percent.
You could even disrespectfully disagree.
No, no, because I respect you, and, and again, I started by saying, I appreciate you're trying to push this through, but we're not going to fix this problem of getting to 67 percent if a town vote, regardless of what you want to say, was 52 percent, and it was over 4,000 people disagreed with a proposal that had been pushed for over a year. The only way we're going to change this is, is to openly explore these options, and by calling the points that are brought up, you know, misinformation and noise, it doesn't help. So I'm committed to moving forward to try to get a school built, and if we get a wonderful Dale Street proposal at that location on an ad-reno, combining it with Park and Rec, and it's the best proposal we could get, we already have a Wheelock proposal that, for a year, was looked at. we already have a Wheelock proposal that for a year was looked at. We'll have two great options for the town then to be able to explore. All we've said all along is to try to get, and, and I know you're making a face, but we have a park and rec problem down there, we have a Dale Street school problem, and I think it's going to take an open mind to fully explore and listen to people when they ask questions. And we asked all these questions for a year and we're shot down. And not only shot down, but personally attacked. So I've been in this town for twenty-nine years. I am, this is the first time I've ever been in, involved in a town discussion that got this personal on both sides. But my commitment is to try to get a school built. And I'm hoping that instead of looking at people who disagree as noise and misinformation, because I guarantee you, I, that was certainly not my intention. But the town had a choice to decide. And there is yet to be on the school building committee or the school committee, an honest assessment of it failed. And it wasn't because we're bad people and don't want a school or we're misinformed or we're ignorant. We're in this together. I want a school. So if we can start having a dialogue like that, where it's not viewed as personal attacks and we're going to bias the MSBA, I just want to get as much good information out as possible and I don't think we've seen that yet. And it's not going to happen unless we can change the dialogue on saying, people who disagree, it's misinformation and noise. I never accused anyone of giving misinformation, but everything that we're, you know, it's, it's gotten to that point where that's how this is being presented. And so I'm hoping the dialogue can change. I want it to change. I don't want to go through another eighteen months of what we all went through. I want to get a school for the kids. And the longer we mess around with it of just having honest, open dialogue around this, the, the longer we avoid not having that and asking questions at the MSBA and collecting good information to inform as many people as possible on the whole thing, then we're going to be, we're going to be back to the same problem. And I hope that's not where it goes. So.
Just a couple of responses. First, the, appreciate the thanks for the public hearing, but just to be clear, the school committee chair joined in this and I pushed for it for months before we got the momentum for it. I think that's fair, but the meeting itself was, we co-chaired it. But to be honest, the school committee chair was the first primed-prime chair of the co-chairs. And I, I believe that that discussion there, to the extent that anybody has to rethink how they're dealing with the public, I think that meeting demonstrated value to everybody that was there. People who participated, the people that were up at the front that were listening. And I think that will be captured. I'll be, I'll be working to try to help make sure some of the key points are captured around what I would think of as guidelines for how a building committee should operate in terms of the considerations. And I think that's going to help that. I, I think that Jess also saw that, so I don't, I'm just being really careful not to make it sound like, oh yeah, we figured it all out. And I think everybody's trying to figure it out. It's got to be different. I'm not sure, you, you sort of described it as like, well, we already had a Wheelock proposal, now let's have a Dale proposal. I'm not sure that's creative thinking enough. I actually think the possibility is there for us to have something that's, that we solve this problem in a much different way. And that's based on some of the conversations, the, you know, the online conversations I've heard between people that were on opposite sides who suddenly kind of said, well, I could live with that and that. And I think that it's not for me to figure it out, but I think the potential is there. So I'm, I'm optimistic. I'm just not sure that it's going to look at all like the binary way we've been thinking about it.
I'm just information. Just get as much good information so we all can come along.
So my, anyway, my point is, we're trying to fix some things structurally. I would like us collectively to allow people to carry out their responsibilities if they volunteer. Maybe it still won't work, but I hear what you're saying around the listening and all that and I'm sympathetic to it. But we have to get on with this in a way that gives these committees a chance to do it. And I'm, I'm arguing to give them a chance once we've got this all reconfigured. That's it.
The only thing I'm going to add to that, if you don't mind, is that, is that I think, again, the only way you show you're changing is by doing things differently. If we get on the same path and follow the same patterns, we're going to end up in the same rat hole. So I think that, and, and now that I'm the new selectman and I'm seeing how the process works, I love the fact that like the info packet, everyone, like I, people stopped me at the state hospital this weekend and said, hey, you know, you guys are going to be talking about the following. So, and I'm at the state hospital a lot these days. Is that people, but people go to the info packet. So I think that as we have these committees, the more information, like again, I, I watched some things happen last year, information for the citizens, because we're all in this together. There may be a committee, but the only thing I will be utterly passionate about is I a hundred percent respect committees, but the committees have to still represent, understand they're representing the citizens. So when citizens come to a committee and say, we have questions to be given the, we got this covered, that's, that is bad. So, so just being open, transparent and giving as much information to the town in Medfield as we go forward. We do it as a selectman, which I love. There's never any secrets as to what happens on a Tuesday. So I think if we as senior leaders.
Even if there should some.
But I think it's something that's a signal. It needs like, if everyone wants to be transparent and upfront and keep everybody engaged, keep everything upfront. Don't, don't give it a week later or two weeks later, because that's not helping the cause.
Pretty confident you'll see us promote that across the board.
No, it's helpful.
Just a quick, quick, a quick footnote and a big note of thanks for, to both Christine and Nick. They are fantastic with sending information whenever I have questions, meeting links, whatever. They're, they're really great. So I just, I just want to let them know how much I appreciate that. And then also on that document that I, that I passed out to you guys, please, please, if you see numbers in there that don't make any sense, let me know. I had a hard time finding more recent numbers on deferred maintenance and repairs for Dale Street. So if there's anything out there that you know of that is more accurate or more up to date, but I did take it right from town documents, but I would appreciate any corrections on numbers. The, the intent was to show a template of, of the kinds of information that I think would be really valuable for people to see so they, they actually know the true value of the MSBA grant. And that it's not, you know, that they look at that twenty-four million dollar number and say, wow, we're going to get twenty-four million, but they're not really taking into account the timeline or other factors that actually dilute the, the value of that dollar. I'm out.
Yeah, thanks, Chris.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good? We're good? So we're, we're going to hold off until we actually see the SOI. Next item, review and discuss proposed power purchase agreement, lease agreement and pilot agreement with Select Energy Development for the Town Garage. This is a twenty-year agreement with one five-year extension option. Questions or?
If I'm not mistaken, this is, I sat in the selectman meeting for probably two months prior. This is what you were talking about with the solar panels going up on the town garage roof. We're not designing it. We are having somebody come in, they'll lease it.
It's a, it's a PPA, which basically is the, the company comes in, they build it, they run it. They work out a deal with you to get the electricity. In fact, this one, we're buying the electricity, but you get it at a discount. Basically, it's sort of a turnkey. We'll let you use our roof and, and you're going to pay us money. That's a good thing.
Okay. Works for me.
It differs from what we have with the wastewater treatment plant, which is where we own it and we built it ourselves. We get a greater return if we do it that way than with the PPA, because they're taking their cut of the, of the monies.
So the argument for, there's probably a couple of arguments for it. The one that I think Mike Markucci's point, and I understand it, is the town shouldn't be buying lots of capital assets that it then has to own and control. Now, we've, we had that same argument made when Eversource gave us the opportunity to buy all of our streetlights. And in that case, we made the decision we were going to buy them, put in the LED lighting. But Mike's argument, Mike Sullivan's argument at the time was, and when these streetlights break, you own them. So it's a, it's a trade-off either way. When you're talking about owning something that you have to maintain, now you're talking about maintenance, you know, your labor responsibilities. So that's, that was what was behind the PPA. I own my solar panels on my roof. I get a good return. My neighbor bought, or had a company come around, like the one that wanted to solicit here a couple of months ago, that basically they come in and say, listen, we'll put something up on your roof and we'll give you a good deal on the electricity you produce. Doesn't cost you a penny. I shelved out a fair amount of money. I took out a home equity loan to pay for the, the thing I have on my roof and I'll get a return, but as long as, as long as they keep working. Then they are. So it's, it's kind of a trade-off of, it's kind of a lease versus buy, there was.
Right.
Any, so any questions on the agreement? Pete, any questions on the agreement? I had. So it says the provider shall sell to host. That would be us.
Which agreement do you have?
I'm looking at the, this is, I didn't print it all out. It's the.
Power purchase or the lease?
It's the power purchase. It's the front end of it, not the lease. Yeah, it's the front end. So the provision is provider shall sell to host and host shall buy from provider all electric energy produced by the project, whether or not host is able to use all such electric energy. I don't know where it goes if we don't use it, but, so Nick, I actually had a question for you on that. Because if we're buying all of the electricity, I just want to make sure I understand the structure. We would be buying the electricity from them at a, an attractive rate. I guess if we don't buy, if we don't use all the electricity, but we buy it all, I don't know where that electricity goes.
So we will, we will purchase all that's produced. We will apply about a hundred and, out of the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand kilowatt hours to be produced a year, we're going to use about a hundred-and-seventy-thousand onsite at the PW building. The rest will be net metered across other town accounts. So that's the incentive change. If it was all being used onsite, it's slightly better. But because we have to net meter, the financial return is slightly lower. But at the end of the day, we will use it, we'll net meter probably to one of the other larger users.
So it's just going to go somewhere else. It's not, that's what I was, I mean, what I was saying is, okay, we're guaranteeing a monthly payment to them for a certain amount of production, I guess. But basically what we need in town is so much greater than what this is producing. There's no issue of us over, under using the electricity.
No, we wouldn't. Between this, we would.
I kind of figured that.
Yeah, we'll use all the town garage's usage and maybe a little bit of the public safety buildings and that would be it.
And then the only other question I had was the pilot payments. They started a little over a thousand dollars in year one and they dropped to six hundred dollars.
Year twenty?
That's, is that in the annual? That's the annual pilot?
So, yeah, it's, it's a one-time payment each year, so a thousand dollars a year one, declining slowly over the twenty years to the last one. We haven't finalized these numbers on the pilot side with the assessor. We're still working to do that. What we were hoping to accomplish tonight was just to clarify any questions and bring it back once it's finalized.
I, and I wasn't, I didn't have a good feel whether a thousand dollars a year from these folks is meaningful relative to the volume and the value of the electricity being produced. On the other hand, I said, yeah, but as a likely tax, real estate tax on what's on a roof, it seemed reasonable. So I, it's not like I had a problem. I just was trying to understand.
It's actual personal property. It's taxes, personal property.
So that's why that's that number. That's a pretty low number, but it's because all we're talking about is the equipment that's going up on the roof.
Right. And this entire agreement is through the power options program, so Select's profitability is limited by the power options program. So let's say the pilot was increased to five thousand a year one, declining over those twenty years, that our rate on the PPA will be adjusted because their value is their value, whether we're paying, they're paying it to the town in the pilot or they're paying it to us in a lower PPA rate. It's at the same at the end of the day. So it's coming out of the same bucket of money. Just depends on which one we're pulling.
The thing that made me pay attention to that pilot amount is when I looked at Exhibit B, it had the early termination amounts. Not, not that we're necessarily going to terminate, but I'm saying, well, wait a minute. If in year one, it's, if it's nine-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars for an early termination, then that's almost a million dollars that we're paying for if we do an early termination, but it's only worth a thousand dollars in taxes, seemed several orders of magnitude apart.
It's a negotiated deal.
Yes.
Yeah.
I was interested that they're putting a million dollars into it. So that's what we're avoiding having to put into it ourselves.
Right. Okay. So I was, those are the only thing. It was not that I had problems. It was just that I was looking at those and going, hmm, that's kind of.
Yeah, we're still working to have a meeting between Select and the assessor just to finalize those numbers based on information they give us on the value of the equipment that they're going to install.
Okay. So we're not voting on anything. We've reviewed it. I don't have any heartburn. Pete, you don't?
I'm good with it, Mike.
Okay. So I think we're, the light is good and we trust you to negotiate a hard-nosed deal if you can do it.
Yeah, we will bring it back.
There's, there's a, Nick and I have sat down and gone over my concerns. There's, there's a number of legal issues that need to be addressed or refined.
Okay. Okay. That's, I guess I'm saying at this point, we will trust the two of you to get us to a proper agreement at the detail level, but at the macro level, this looks fine.
Great.
I would, I would say that in general, my preference would be for the town to own it, because there's greater return there. I understand that we don't want to manage it so that we're doing it this way, but when we get to the, the old dump site, I, I hope that we own that one. Landfill.
We got one that we own and one that we don't, and probably by the time we get to the dump site, we'll have enough of a track record to
We'll know.
have a good sense of what it takes to do each. I understand what you're saying. If you can get a better return.
Yeah.
Like I said, I, I paid for my solar panels.
Jeff, I got, there's one question about what the discount rate is on the PPA. And so the price per kilowatt hour is five and a half cents per kilowatt hour is the rate in the PPA for the entire twenty-year duration. We're paying right now about nine-point-seven cents a kilowatt hour just for the supply and their additional kilowatt hour charges. So it's about not, a little bit more than half off of what we're paying today for our supply.
Okay. We're good. Next item, action item, vote to approve the MBTA Community Information Form to satisfy the how-to comply for 2022 requirements related to MGL Chapter Forty-A, Section Three-A, sometimes referred to as MBTA Communities. Form must be submitted by May second.
This is the next step in our interim compliance.
Correct. Any questions on the form?
No, I went through it. It, it makes sense. I love the fact that we're trying to look at what we're doing at State Hospital and saying to the state, hey, you know, we're doing this already. It might not hit the numbers that they're looking for, but.
So that was the one question I had. But Pete, let me go.
My, my, my question for Sarah had been, can we get out of this by getting out of the MBTA? Because we, we get, we get, we pay very little into the MBTA every year and we get the ride. We get the ability to call the ride and have them take.
It's also for the proximity of the train stations.
Right. I'd say a lot of people use Walpole train stations, so I think it's not, not part of it.
What happens is you just, you don't get the right to access certain programs, financial programs, if you don't comply with this. Oh, I know, I know. But I, I thought, you know, it's, it's all labeled MBTA Community Information Form. I've never been. Because it's all in the books still. It's still in the statutes. They've never amended the statutes from what they originally intended to do, which was to expand. So my solution, Mark, was that I've never been hugely in favor of our being an MBTA community in any event. I think that if we went to the MWRTA, we'd actually get a bus to run through town. When I talked to Roberta at the Council on Aging about that, she said, please don't do that, because the people here use the ride. That's the only service that we get really from the MBTA, is the ability to call the ride and you can go to Lynn for five dollars, I think, as a, as a senior or a disabled person. And, and so I've just, I've, I've paid attention to that, but when this came up and rather than have to, have to do some sort of zoning, inclusion zoning as of right that allows for seven-hundred-and-fifty units, I thought, well, is this an opportune time to leave the MBTA and go to the MW? We don't. No, Sarah, Sarah educated me. Yeah, yeah. Sarah did your work for you.
To your point though, Pete, is that Nick, we pay like a hundred-and-fifty thousand a year or something to the MBTA. Yeah, it's not a, it's not a small amount that we're paying, but, but it's because, it's not just the ride. It's also the proximity of the commuter rail stations. And there are a lot of people in town that use the commuter rail.
We could opt out of being an MB, MBTA community and we could instead have that hundred-and-fifty thousand go to the MWRTA and you can get one of those little buses to come to town.
How would we stop commuters from using the commuter rail?
There's a ton of people use Walpole and.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I don't, I don't know, but I, my understanding is that as, as a town, we have the option of where that hundred-and-fifty thousand goes, whether it goes to the MBTA or whether we can do a deal with a, another transportation company like the MWRTA, which has buses going through Wellesley and I don't know where else they go.
Yeah, but, but I'm still not sure how people would use the commuter rail. If you, I don't know how you opt out of the commuter rail.
You can't tell people not to go to Walpole.
Right. Or for, or.
Well, that's not the issue. I think it's a question of where your money goes. And so that, you know, instead of, we're signed up with the MBTA and we give them a hundred-and-fifty thousand. And so that, you know, instead of, we're signed up with the M B T A and we give them 150,000 a year. But if we give that 150,000 to the M W R T A, we might get something better.
But what I'm saying, though, Pete, I'm saying, but it's not just for the ride. It's, it's the fact that there are train stations you can go.
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay, well, that's what I understood it was for. It was all, anyway. I did have a question. The, the, the main question is that in this form, it basically says that the, the state hospital land does in fact comply with that, with that density requirement. I don't understand how Sarah calculated that. And secondly, I believe the requirement is that it be that density by right, which I don't understand how we would provide by right zoning at the state hospital when we already have the special zoning that we've already passed. It's like, does the special zoning go away and it's all just the land is by right, so.
So this is a step-by-step process. These guidelines haven't even been finalized yet. They're still in process. So your only concrete requirement up to this point was to have the presentation that Sarah gave you a few weeks ago. And by signing up now, you're basically saying, we're complying with what you've required us to do to date.
Right.
And not really made a commitment as to what's going to happen in the future.
Right, but the, but the information that's on this form that we're signing.
Sarah calculated, her approach to this all along has been, and she's reached out to D H C D and the mass housing has been, we have a zoning district that allows the density you're looking for when you're looking at the buildable space because at the hospital, it's based on buildings. So it's a, it's a creative argument, but that's where she's coming from at it is.
I don't have a problem. We can get away with that.
That would be very creative.
That's where she's.
But is, is this process goes forward, it gets more detailed, more examination, there has to be analyses done. And it's several years before this community would actually have to have the final zoning in place anyway.
Right, no, that part, that part of it I get, but I want to make sure the information we have is accurate, even if it seems weird.
So there's been a huge pushback from municipalities similarly situated to Medfield and even more rural because some of these communities go way out into central, even western Mass because that was, they were projected for expansions that have never occurred. And then, but they're listed in the statute, so they've been picked up in this. So there's a tremendous amount of pushback that developing at even the minimum requirements that are contained can destroy the character of a suburban or rural community. And so it remains to be seen how that's going to play out now.
So I, I guess you're, we're looking to approve signing this form?
Continuing our compliance.
Continuing our compliance in the sincere belief that all of the information in the form that we have submitted does in fact represent an accurate, well, an honest response consistent with the state's understanding of what the questions they've asked are and what the answers to those questions can be.
In light of the fact that they don't have guidelines.
In light of the fact they don't have guidelines.
They're looking for people to push back and give these type of responses. That's what I sensed from Sarah.
Trying to remember, is it all three of us that are signing this statement?
Oh, no, you're on the hook, buddy.
Yeah, that's what I thought, that's what I thought. All right, based on this conversation, which Medfield TV, I trust you have recorded. Okay. If you, if the two of you are inclined, entertain a motion and a vote.
I would move to, move forward with the M B T A community information form as specified in the agenda.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Yes.
All opposed. All right, motion carries. And do we have to authorize, I should have, do you have to authorize the chair to sign it or? Don't, don't, don't. I'll say it. Okay. Okay, no citizen comment? Consent agenda, we have three things, was it? And one of them we need to talk about. But so there's spring car wash dates. April 16th, Medfield High School Boys Track already took place. April 30th, Medfield High School Girls Track. May 7th, Medfield High School Girls Lacrosse. May 14th, Medfield High School Indoor Track. May 21st, Medfield High School Lacrosse. June 4th, Hannah Adams Women's Club. June 11th, Medfield High School Girls Varsity. How did Hannah Adams Women's Club get in there?
I wonder who's doing that.
June 11th, Medfield High School Girls Varsity Soccer and June 18th, Medfield High School Boys Soccer. So that's all those dates for the spring car wash behind the town hall. Medfield Lions request permission to post signs at the approved locations for the spring gala event scheduled for May 7th. And then First Parish Unitarian Universalist Church of Medfield requests a parade permit for May 25th, 7:30 PM for anti-racist candlelight vigil to take place around Meeting House Pond, Ferry Street and Main Street. And I have a question on that route, but.
Firewood.
That's, I'm the only one with a question. So the, the only question I had, this is a Wednesday night. And according to the, the written request, it talks about going, you know, out Meeting House Pond, down Ferry Street, up them to Ferry and the last bit on Main Street. And I'm trying to picture how, like the last bit. I don't know what the last bit means. And so number one, I don't know what the last bit actually means. And number two, this event starts at 7:30 on a Wednesday night, which says by the time they do this, it's 8:30 on a Wednesday night. It's dark. And the question is, is this that you want to be on the sidewalk? Or are you literally planning to stop traffic on Route 109 in the dark?
I believe they are planning to be on the sidewalk, but they were concerned in case they have a little overflow into the road right.
I think they just have to make sure they don't have, I mean, is the police chief had comments on this? I just see that as a.
She's reviewing it.
Okay, I see it as a safety hazard if it involves the road. And no problem at all if it, I'd probably almost say you don't need a parade permit to use the sidewalk.
You recommended the parade.
Okay.
It's, they're, they're asking for permission to use the public way. We don't have a formal procedure or detailed procedure in place, which frankly, we should, but we don't. But nevertheless, you want the oversight, you want the input from the police and you want some, some controls over it. You don't want groups to just be on their own, holding demonstrations and assemblies in the public way.
Okay, well, so I'm, I'm good with that. My quick reaction is that we don't want people intentionally or unintentionally bleeding over onto the street on a dark Wednesday night, even if it's just a little bit of Main Street.
My, my suggestion would be, since it's not until the end of May, if this could be held and get some feedback from them and also from Chief.
Yeah, she's currently on vacation. She, she's going to review when she gets back.
Okay, so let's, then we can defer that one.
Did I don't think they gave us a reading?
So I would then move the consent agenda for items eight and nine.
One second, yes.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Opposed. First two passed, we'll defer number 10 pending.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice. That's kind of really meaningful instance. Okay. Let's see. Meeting minutes.
Could, could I ask that we hold those until I really have a chance to sit down and go through them? I, I don't know which ones I've reviewed and which ones I haven't. I was doing tax returns.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So Brittany sent out an email that actually has her prior list and her current list.
Oh, I, see, I didn't even look at that. I didn't have time.
Came in, uh, came in on the 12th, yeah.
I've got it.
So Tuesday, April 12th, 2:43 PM. This is a good one.
Yeah, I'll go back and look at that one. That'll be very helpful, thank you.
We're going to defer all of them, but just so you know, Christine, March 1st, I, I've gone through the three new ones. I figured we wouldn't dig the hole deeper. We'd just start with the newest ones and then work my way down. March 1st, it's the discussion with Mo about the, the niche engineering presentation. That's a very confusing section. I, I actually tried to edit that. I've done a pretty heavy edit on that section, but there's some places that it was like, gee, I think I remember what they were talking, like, there's a reference to traffic lights and it sounds like it's talking about traffic lights at North and Harding. And I'm almost positive it was traffic lights at South and 27, but it didn't identify. So there, so you'll see my comments on the Google docs.
There were no traffic lights at Harding and, and North.
It was just a confusingly worded.
Roundup, possible roundabout maybe, but.
They didn't have your comment about the paint kind of going the wrong way.
I know, I noticed that too, but I figured my comments haven't had any impact. So what, what good would it do to insist that that be called out in the meeting minutes?
Mo must have reviewed them before.
All right, uh, let's see, next, town administrator updates.
Two quick updates this evening. One, the warrant report is scheduled to arrive tomorrow and that will be mailed to everybody the following day. So look for that this weekend. The other one is I just wanted to give you a P F A S update. Water and Sewer Board met last week. Wells 1 and 2 have had a slight increase in their P F A S results. And all those results can be found on the town's website. We're still under the threshold for D E P, but Water and Sewer will start further investigation. As you know, we did appropriate money from Arba funding for the study, so we'll work on that as well.
Good. Next meeting dates, next week, we'll be back here again on Tuesday. Annual town meeting on May 2nd. And because that's the annual town meeting, we're deferring the board of selectmen meeting until the following week. So it'll be May 10th. And then the second meeting for May will be May 24th. Selectmen reports.
All righty, so since we last gathered, I did get a chance to head up to the ferry house event, which I thought was fantastic. You had a chance to see up there. So well done. Can only imagine the turnout next week. I got up there and I thought they were giving money away. There were tons of cars parked over by North and Hardy Park. And, and because you know my new pet peeve is dogs on leashes, I did have my dog on leash up there. I was in the quad. But it was nice. I actually saw Jenny Cronin the following Tuesday when I was up there and she said, no incidents. I mean, everybody really adhered to, you know, everyone was in the quad, they kept their dogs on leashes. If you left that area, so be it. So she was happy that people took it seriously. So that was actually a really great event. Kudos to everybody. And then I think we're going to start to see more of the Saturday events up there, right? Starting, okay. And then I, I was supposed to meet with Chief Greco, but unfortunately.
He was unavailable.
Yeah, unavailable.
He'll be back this week.
So I will meet up with him and happy that.
Very good, okay.
I, I got to the, the event at the hospital too and I learned what a ferry house was and, and, and the, it was just, it was really fun to see the kids enjoying themselves. Nicely done event. I actually had a, an interaction with a couple of the Medfield police officers in the past week. And, and they were both just such impressive people to deal with that I was just, I don't deal with the Medfield officers very often. So I was just very impressed. I actually sent the chief an email to tell her that, that her, her officers were doing a really nice job and were very impressive people.
They didn't pull you over at West Mill, did they? They didn't pull you over at West Mill, did they?
No, I was actually doing a good thing, I guess. I was reporting a, an abandoned vehicle with four flat tires that I thought was kind of suspicious, having four flat tires. And I thought they'd want to know, so. The Medfield Foundation had a meeting, as did the Medfield Foundation Legacy Fund Committee and, and the Energy Committee as well. The Energy Committee just went through a huge number of things. They are just so active. It's just very impressive. Let me just run down some of the things that they're doing. Heat pumps, Blake Middle School walked through. The Tomcap, they've, they've written this climate action plan. It's, it's just about ready to get released to you guys. They had, oh, a, a new person that I hadn't met before is, is looking to do a Solarize Plus for the town like we did Solarize Medfield before. She was looking to do not only the photovoltaics, but the heat pumps. Emily Lowny. Green Communities, we got a great report from Susan McPhee about that. And, and the good news is, I guess, Chris, that, and Nick, that all of the things are getting done because the way the Green Communities grants work is that you have to actually do the work from the prior grants before you can apply for the new ones. And the, and the, the new grants are coming in the fall and, and Susan McPhee, our consultant, our energy consultant, said that it looks like we're going to, Amy's going to get everything, Amy Collar, on the facilities manager, is going to see that everything gets done in, in time so that, that, we should be able to, to do that. We talked about the car show because they're going to have a bunch of E V vehicles in that. Is there going to be a spring green fair at the U U Church? And, and the Energy Committee is going to be part of that. Penny Connor talked about the status of the solar. And Cindy Green gave us a rundown on federal funds. Cindy works for the EPA and she was educating us about the opportunity to get electric buses. There's $5 billion in the country that's being put out for, for climate action stuff. And everybody's looking to, it would be helpful if the, if the country did electric buses. And that's the Energy Committee, that's it.
Okay, then I had, schedule was pretty full between the last meeting and this one. April 6th was the M S H Development Committee Information Meeting in the, in the high school library. That went well. There are plans to do more, so there'll be a sequence of those. I think the next, so Todd just sent an email out and I didn't bring it with me. But I think the next planned one will be a similar information meeting, except that Trinity will be present for it. So it'll be, again, not, you know, I don't think we're down to the nuts and bolts of an L D A yet, but in the, as they getting farther into the due diligence process, they'll be available for that. So people can meet Trinity and ask Trinity questions, which will be a good thing. April 7th was the Joint School Committee Board of Selectmen Public Hearing. That was at the Public Safety Building. That also went well. That's, sharing my earlier comments, there were points that were made in that meeting that I think kind of have to get distilled down and refined to become guidelines for how to conduct business. But I think that there, there were a lot of good points that were made there. And I think there's, it's a good starting point for that, getting things fixed. Or better, maybe better is a better word. And then the 10th, the daffodil days, in addition to the points that Eileen and Pete made, two points. Number one, there's some, there's some young girl dancers in this, in this area. They're doggone rugged because it was pretty windy and cold. And they're sitting there with these little, you know, like open-shouldered, it was like, I was impressed. I had a jacket on, it was zipped up all the way. And then the other thing is just before my wife and I were ready to walk back home, it just, you see all the people. You see a nice day. You look up through the quad and you picture that piece of property developed. And we have a tremendous opportunity here. It just really is. It'll be a great place for people to live with the culture and arts in the center of it. You know, people are coming from all over the place, as it was, just for a bunch of empty buildings. And I, I just, you could just see the fact that Jean has nearly weekly events planned. I'm thinking every day, every week that there's another event, there'll be more people that will be able to get up there and see what, what the potential is. Because I think it's tremendous. On the 14th, there was a Memorial Day Parade Committee meeting. So far, I just kind of, I've managed to avoid getting any action items to report on progress, but they are making progress. They're, I think I said before, parade route's a little different. They are planning to have like an ice cream truck there or probably, but it's intended for like the, the kids and the marchers. It's not quite the, the broad open barbecue kind of thing that the Legion has put on before. They don't have that facility, so, but there'll be stuff for the kids that march in it. Looks like it'll be a good, good turnout. And then finally, earlier this, or last week, last week, there was, we had on Friday, I guess it was, Christine, what was it? The gun range meeting?
Friday.
Or it was, yeah, Friday. There was a preliminary discussion with the state and with Trinity and with us around the issue of what needs, what could be done up at the gun range off of Route 27. For anyone who's paying attention to the proposal, the one potential showstopper in the Trinity proposal was, we have, we're going to have a problem getting financing with the amount of noise that's coming out of the gun range. I had kind of assumed that that was going to be a zero-sum game where we're going to be fighting with the state about, you know, what they could put in to fix the problem. you know, what they could put in to fix the problem. It turns out that the state actually is actively working to approve the training for police across the state. And so, it's, it's way too early to be, you know, know for sure what could be there, but it appears that there's more potential for us to work out a better solution, and a solution with a broader set of benefits than I had anticipated when I was first trying to think about how could we solve that problem with what I was thinking might be a reluctant state and a limited amount of money, so... There's grounds for cautious optimism, it was only an early discussion, nothing's been nailed down, and there are issues around land ownership and stuff like that, but I'm actually getting more optimistic that that's going to, we're going to have a good, we're going to be able to find a good resolution there. The only other thing, Christine, I had, was the, the Auditor's Report that came in, and I just looked at the management letter. And there were a couple of things. The one that I, the one that I was curious about that is appropriate to ask about here was the last vote, they had developed a plan to spend down the surplus balances in the kindergarten tuition and school rentals fund. I'm assuming that's a school committee
Yes.
bucket, and I'm assuming there are good purposes for that. Is this kind of like the thing where we can't hang on to bond proceeds that we haven't done, I think we got to get, I mean, why, why they, why can't they just kind of keep it there as, as a effectively not revolving revolving fund?
I don't know the answer to that. We've asked the auditors to commit and have that discussion with us, and I know that Jeff and Michael have also responded to that. That's all that you know.
Okay, I'm just curious. And I think that was it.
Probably not, so not the seed fund.
Does anybody have anything else?
No.
Nothing from the crowd, all right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thanks for coming, thanks for tuning in, thanks, Medfield TV.